Flag.
Let your lead teams to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first off for our agenda this evening, we have a couple of minor revisions under my report. We will add a six E, Sharon wants to give you a brief update on the three hundred and fiftieth celebration. And under number eight, the finance report, item D, the proposed transfers for fiscal thirteen, we want to skip this evening. So that will be pulled off the agenda. Anything else you have for the agenda, Mr. Sheridan?
The under policy tonight, we have a wellness policy and our food service director, Jackie Morgan, is coming in. If we are not at that point yet in the agenda, would it be possible to move just that item up to where we, a reasonable point in the agenda, please?
That, we have that, and we also have Rick Neely from the town government study committee coming later. When we have guests come in for those points, if we're able to rearrange, I'll rearrange and bring them on and sit down and sit in here through things. So we'll just, it's all right with everybody, we'll just adjust the agenda at that point if we can pick up on those items. Anything else? All right, so along with the agenda, just before we start, I'd like to welcome back our student member, Katie Ryder. She's here for her second year. And we will move on to our citizen speak. We have four people per citizen speak. I would remind you, please come up, if you haven't done this before, state your name and address. We have a long agenda, as you can see in front of us, our policy is no more than three minutes, please. We will try to, since there's only four, we should be all right doing that. And as, just again, for people who haven't done this before, we don't respond to citizen speak topics at the meeting, as of further meetings. So, first, Jerry Viti.
Thank you very much, I'm Jerry Viti. I live at fifteen Longwood Road here in Milton. And I am the chairman of the Milton Parent Advisory Council, which is the special education PAC. And I have three children, Anthony, Francesca, and Celia. We are a French, English, role model, special ed, and private school family, sort of like the UN of school choice. The Milton Parent Advisory Council, as you know, but for the audience, is an organization mandated by state law to advise the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. And we meet regularly with the administration and advise the school committee in that capacity. So I know the issue of the day is the school programming issue, which we don't see as a PAC as an English-French issue. We see the issue of the cap and enrollment as really as an issue for all children. And including those with disabilities. And I think in our society, we consider that everyone is created equal. And according to the federal law, children in this, all children, are entitled to a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive setting. And that's regardless of their differences or in their course of studies. And any plan that's presented, in every perspective, and in every discussion, and every thought, I think needs to consider the rights of disabled children as paramount in their thought. I don't think we can have any part of the discussion without considering the rights and the needs of children with special education. And therefore, the PAC views the issue as a civil rights issue. We have, we think disabled students have the right to an education in the least restrictive setting, to identify one area. Certainly, the co-taught classrooms, we consider as a very, as a least restrictive setting. And only having an English program with an appropriate number of role models to select from will ensure and protect the rights of children with disabilities. So therefore, we advocate not only for the cap, but also for the cap to be done in 2013. So I think when we talk about the rights of a group, you know, transcends economics and politics and practical difficulties and also time. There's an urgency for the school committee to act. Disabled students shouldn't be asked to wait online for a system that, while it gets in place, to uphold and protect their rights to the educational rights that we talked about. And I think it's important that families of disabled children do not have to worry about whether their system protects and is going to ensure that their kids get the rights that they're entitled to, but more importantly, the educational opportunities that are there and should be in place for all our kids. And I know as a PAC, we're confident that the administration, that the community, and that the school committee will do the right thing and vote and will present a plan that works, and in spite of some practical difficulties or, you know, opinions for or against, that it'll be passed and that everyone will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Second, I have Gary Kelly.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Gary Kelly, three seventy Hillside Street, Milton. I am the president of the Milton High School Boosters, and I'm here just to get the message out that we have our most important fundraiser of the year coming up. It's October twenty-third. It is the Spring for Sports. I think most people might be familiar with that, hopefully. But it's a great day and it's an excellent opportunity, I'm here this evening for citizen speak, to let the Milton citizens know, as well as the high school parents, that it's being held at the Walsing Golf Club. So being a private club, it's a great opportunity possibly for the Milton citizens to join us to help us fund the largest fundraiser of the year. The Spring for Sports is basically a golf tournament and a tennis round robin. It's been going on for about seven or eight years now, and we are very fortunate. Curry College is one of our, is our main sponsor. We just heard from President Quigley the other day, and we're very grateful to him. He's been a great supporter to the Boosters. Everything is pretty much online. It's at www.miltonboosters.com. So you can sign up online, you can get your registration form online, and get all the information. There's opportunities to be a sponsor. There's a number of different sponsorships that we're looking for, as well as golfers and tennis players as well. This year, we're doing something a little bit different, and we're giving some of the money directly to the teams. So when you go online, you can take a look and see how that will work. I think that will encourage a lot of citizens and a lot of coaches and parents to get more involved. So we're looking for a sellout day and hopefully great weather. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Can we just get the timeline out? Is that all day?
Starts at ten AM.
And is there a dinner afterwards that people can just go to the dinner?
Yes.
What time does that start? So I'll just say that on, so people can hear it at home, at five o'clock, there's a reception at the Walsin Golf Course, Clubhouse, for people who can't or aren't interested in golfing but want to still participate.
Next on, we have Mike Draustick.
My name is Mike Draustick. My wife Julia and I reside at three eighty Hillside Street. We have two children, Catherine, currently in the second grade, in second grade French at Cunningham, and Danny, who enters first grade next year. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. We appreciate the school committee's efforts in grappling with the difficult issues surrounding the proposed French immersion cap. We wish to draw your attention to a subset of the school population that we call straddled families. By straddled family, we mean those with young children already in the French program and younger siblings not yet in first grade. These families committed to the French program before the current cap debate reached the public. We believe that straddled families are uniquely affected by the proposed cap and therefore deserve special consideration. Family involvement, we are told, enhances a child's school performance. Reading together is cited as a most important ingredient for success. Accordingly, we approach reading for homework and for fun as a family endeavor. Catherine's participation in the French program has had a huge influence on this dynamic. Catherine now reads her French chapters to Danny, who speaks with excitement of next year when he will study in French like Catherine. Because our children differ in age by only sixteen months, it was always a critical element of our family plan that they share a common curriculum. I emphasize that for us, this was always the most important consideration. In 2011, prior to registering Catherine, we carefully researched Milton's French program. Significantly, the program then accommodated all applicants. As part of our research, Julia met with a member of the school administration who discussed the issue of sibling placement and represented that siblings receive preference as regards placement into schools and programs. If Catherine, for example, enrolled in French at Cunningham, then Danny would have first preference for French at Cunningham. We relied on this representation, and after careful deliberation, we took the plunge, adopting a family plan that entrusted our children's education to the French program. Had we perceived any legitimate hint that in two short years a cap might threaten to separate our children, we would have chosen the more cautious route and opted for English. We continue to approach learning as a family project. Our family plan is succeeding. But Danny's enrollment in French is critical to its continued success. To exclude Danny from French would divide our attention, fragment our interests, and compromise the support that we, parents and siblings, provide and enjoy. And given that Danny already is a de facto participant in the program, denying his enrollment in French would be almost as disruptive as terminating Catherine's. Families who have not yet entered the first grade can adapt to the new risk accompanying a cap, but we cannot. Our family plan is underway. We committed our children, our family, to the French program. We perceived a reciprocal commitment by the Milton school system. Straddled families make up a fraction of the school population, perhaps easily forgotten. Yet we feel that we have a unique stake and a unique vulnerability. Therefore, we vigorously suggest that the enrolling first graders of straddled families be given first priority to opt for the French program. We anticipate debate as to the fairness of grandfathered status. Some may argue that a lottery system is inherently the most fair. But we believe that a key element of fairness is the availability of information that provides opportunity to assess risk and to plan. In 2011, there was no reason for us to anticipate a cap. And we believe that as a community, we might do better than random chance that blindly ignores the importance of family cohesiveness. Thank you for your consideration and for your ongoing efforts to reach a compromise that includes a transition plan and protects those most vulnerable to a surprise midstream change, of course.
Thank you. And Stanford Brown.
I was hoping for a little more light for my old eyes. My name is Stanford Brown. My two children and I reside at one ninety-five Milton Street, that's in Quincy. But it's a Milton tax lot. So we're entitled to attend Colaycott School, which is where my two children are currently enrolled in kindergarten. The context of my comments framed essentially by two thoughts. First, I'm an extremely strong, I was going to say strong, but extremely strong supporter of the second language immersion program concept, delivered at an early age, wherever it occurs. And whatever language it occurs, the benefits are many, academic and otherwise. And since their birth, I have been seeking, because their birth mom was French, we chose French, but we might have just as easily chose Spanish to sum up their language. Where we lived, far away from here, didn't have a program that would accommodate them, in a public school setting, that is. And so after coming out for kindergarten night last January, we were, I was pretty much told. And similar to the prior speaker, I was assured that, if that's the right word, that yes, if anybody who wanted to get into the two-language immersion program would be admitted, just kind of depended on what school you might end up in. And I thought to myself, okay, well, one of the four schools within the system would be fine for us. So on that basis, we packed up and headed east. And we are now happily living in the Milton area. At this point in time, I'm perplexed, as many are. And, you know, on the one hand, I find myself looking at one extreme where the French immersion program or second language immersion program, one person suggested, why don't we just make the school all French immersion? And while some public charter schools have done just that across the country and very successfully, I'm not going to be an advocate for that. On the other hand, I don't think it's productive for other people to accuse us, second language parents, as being elitist or anything. It's mean and untrue and poisonous to the dialogue. So having said that, I can see that many of us kindergarten parents want to assist the superintendent and the school committee in reaching a solution that really does succeed in your task of balancing the needs and best interests of all student populations. And so the people I have spoken to, who are all kindergarten parents, and I don't speak for them, but I know that we share some conversations, a lot of very similar points of view. We feel, kindergarten parents feel in jeopardy, vulnerable, because of the impending cap and lottery decision, which we kind of view as a fait accompli in many respects. And so we'd like to do, I'm speaking for myself now, and many of you have received my emails already along this regard, along this line. But I'd like to propose that any cap and lottery be devised as a multi-year phased-in rollback, so to speak, of the annual French enrollment, the French program enrollment. And in particular, to exempt out the kindergarten class, a current kindergarten class, much as the prior speaker said, we already moved here, we're already in the pipeline, we're committed, we are attending schools, we're in the community. And I just think that the current kindergarten class should be passed over, so to speak. If there's a multi-year phase-in of a cap and associated lottery device, that it should start, maybe be passed now, but become effective the following year, the fourteen, fifteen year. And which would give the families of, who currently have four-year-olds, at least eighteen months to truly deliberate how they want to approach this. The second aspect to me would be to, contrary to the, contrary to the prior speaker, I don't mean to address it that way, but would be to, if there's going to be a cap and lottery, then the current practice of sibling preference seems abundantly unfair to young families who, or parents of only children, only one child, in that we are, essentially, the sibling preference families essentially go to the front of the line in a lottery, up till this point, and presumably in a lottery scenario as well. If the cap, in fact, reduces the enrollment for this coming year or subsequent years by very much, then the sibling preference, effect of it is exaggerated on families that do not have a sibling in the system. Not quite an exponential, but it's exaggerated, and puts us in a really vulnerable position. In fact, you know, it would be understandable how a lot of parents of kindergarten children, where they're either not to be exempted out, the kindergarten kids, or, and/or not eliminate sibling preference practice, we essentially be marginalized out, and speaking for myself, I would have to consider seeking another language immersion program.
I'll let you go over a couple of minutes here, so I'll just let you wrap up.
The last point I'd like to make would be just to, I think it'd be a terrific idea to balance the enrollment of both programs for the four demographic factors that Dr. O'Dwyer mentioned, which are minority, low income, IEP, and gender. But I would add to that, special ed as well. And maybe in the French program, we adopt our own role model program to the maximum extent possible. Anyway, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right, well, that takes care of the list. We have people who have signed up for citizen speak. So we'll move on into our agenda. First item is the minutes of August fifteenth. Accept a motion to approve the August fifteenth. Second by Ms. Bagley-Jumpu, by Ms. Sheridan. Any comments, corrections? Yes, Ms. Sheridan?
On page one, two, three, four, down at the bottom, under school committee, goes at the bottom of the page. It says, "Mr. Sheridan proposed putting actual science teachers in the classroom." I think that my comment at that time was to just share that other districts are doing that. It wasn't a proposal that I was making that we should do that, so if that would just be changed. Doesn't that great job?
Share that other systems are putting actual science teachers.
Right, that science teachers teach science and not science.
Anything else? Ms. Kelly?
There's a move, but I'm not sure what the motion is, so... I think we need to do a little bit more-
I think it was reiterated here, I didn't catch that.
I think in both sections, I'm not exactly sure what the motion is, and I think we need to be really careful on that. And unfortunately, I don't have a suggestion or revision, so I'm wondering whether we might table that.
I don't, I believe the first-
The first one goes back to the-
First one goes back to which?
The policy subcommittee, or we're-
No, I don't, I think the first one actually shouldn't be. The only motion I believe was to authorize the collective bargaining outside of regular bargaining for the alterations to-
I guess my point is, the motion very, it needs to be very succinct and it needs to be in the form that it was presented. And I think that these minutes should reflect that, if we can just go back and revise for that. Because I just don't know what, there's two different moves here, and I'm not sure what the motions are that are being moved, either. So is it possible to table this?
We'll take a listen. So we will move on to the superintendent's report.
I like the chairman, Pavlichuk. So first, under our agenda, we're going to begin with the grade one assignment plan presentation. And so to the school committee, I might ask the school committee members who are in the front underneath the screen. We place the screen here to help the viewing audience. Thank you. So to the school committee, the parents and guardians and citizens who are here with us tonight, and the viewing audience. We in Milton, as you heard, demonstrated tonight by parents of children in the program, have excellent elementary programming, excellent programming, pre-K through grade twelve. At the elementary level, we have outstanding English program, French immersion program, and co-taught program. And the purpose of my recommendation last spring and this presentation tonight is to help us sustain these elementary programs and to create optimal learning environments for all children, for all students. And people have asked me how we came about to this presentation, how the process worked. And I want to inform the audience and the school committee who understands, I met with the leadership team, which is made up of our elementary principals, middle school principal, high school principal, Matt Gillis, John Phalen, and I, and our special ed director, Karen Klasby. And so they have had input into this presentation. I met singularly with and spoke with, or spoke with, each of the school committee members. But this is my presentation and my recommendation to the school committee and the public tonight on this very important issue. And demonstrated tonight and over the past meetings, while every parent and guardian has the right and the responsibility to advocate for their child, which, in my opinion, I said to a parent, Mr. McNulty, here with us tonight, is really the strength of this school district, I have a responsibility to represent and lobby for and guarantee, to the best of our ability, an outstanding education for every one of our children. So we'll begin with the presentation tonight. So I made presentations to the school committee relative to the English and the French immersion programs on student demographic data, historical enrollment figures and class sizes, the impact of the recent enrollment trends. And over the summer, we had a student achievement data presentation by Milton Public School parent and Boston College professor, Dr. Laura O'Dwyer. The impact of the enrollment trends. I identified the following issues with the from recent elementary program enrollment trends. We had decreased enrollment in the English program has created single strands in schools, limited options for inclusion programs, limited the pool of role models for co-taught programs, and limited the flexibility of classroom assignment. The decreased enrollment in the English program created those, had that impact on those four impacts. Fluctuation in program enrollments has resulted in an imbalance in student demographic representation in both programs. And the fluctuation in program enrollments has resulted in organizational instability. To define the problem, the impact of the recent enrollment trends has limited the district's ability to provide an optimal learning environment for all students. My recommendation is to resolve the problem, and my recommendation is that the district implement a lottery capping model for the French immersion program. The school committee request. After receiving input from the school leadership team, parents and guardians, and the public through citizen speak, emails, phone calls, and individual meetings, the Milton school committee has requested a more detailed plan of implementation for a lottery capping of the French immersion program prior to taking action on my recommendation. And thus, we're here tonight. The grade one assignment plan. So I'm going to proceed now and give you my recommendation with detail. My recommendation is to implement a lottery capping plan for French immersion starting with the 2013-14 school year with the following steps. Each year, determine the level of interest in grade one English and French programs. Accommodate and assign all students- Accommodate and assign all students to grade one English who select English. Hold school-based lotteries for French immersion seats. Determine the number of grade one English and French immersion sections and class sizes at each school. And assign students to French immersion classes via a school-based lottery system. Now to detail. Step one, determine the level of interest. In February of each year, the superintendent will host a grade one information night for families. In February of each year, the schools will host grade one classroom visits for families. In March of each year, the current Milton Public Schools kindergarten families will select either the English program or the French immersion program. Step two, assign students who select English to English classes. The central office will assign all students who select English to English in their home Step three, hold school-based lotteries for French immersion. All current Milton Public Schools kindergartens who select French immersion will enter a school-based lottery. All students will receive an assignment order number from the lottery for assignment in French immersion seats. The fourth step, determine the number of grade one sections and seats. My recommendation for the number of grade one English and French immersion sections is based on the school classroom configuration throughout the district. The standard elementary school building configurations, the way the buildings were built to hold a certain number of classrooms. At the Collicott, it's a four-strand school, two English, two French at each grade level. Cunningham School, a three-strand per grade, two English, one French. Glover School, four strands per grade, two English, two French. And at the Tucker School, a three-strand per grade, two English, one French. Each school will have a minimum of two sections of English to promote an optimal learning environment for all students. This is essential. If more than fourteen sections of grade one are necessary, the superintendent will create an additional, any additional sections based on the needs of the district. The superintendent will determine the class size for English up to twenty-two and French immersion up to twenty-six each year based on enrollment. Step five, assign students to French immersion via school-based lottery. All students who select French will enter the lottery, and siblings will not receive preference for placement in French immersion. Students will be assigned to the open seats in their school based on their assignment order determined by the school-based lottery until the seats are filled. Students who are not placed in the French immersion program will be placed in the English program at their home school if class size allows. And students who are not placed in the French immersion program will also be placed on a waitlist in the event that seats open up in the French immersion program at their school. The outcomes of the plan. The plan for a lottery capping of the French immersion program, recommended by me, will drive the enrollment numbers towards optimal learning environments for all students. The plan will increase enrollment numbers in the English program and will eliminate single strands in English, increase options for inclusion programs, increase the pool of role models for co-taught programs, increase the flexibility of classroom assignment. The plan will contribute to more balanced student demographics between the English and the French immersion programs, and the plan will result in increased organizational Additional notes, items of note. In its first year of implementation, 2013-14, the Cunningham School will have four sections of grade one to account for the four sections of kindergarten in 2012-13 that was driven by student enrollment. In 2013-14 school year, the superintendent will determine if the fourth section of grade one is English or French immersion based on the needs of the district. Additionally, Milton Public School kindergarten students on the French immersion waitlist will be kept on school-based waitlists. If a seat in French immersion opens up, the next student on the school-based waitlist will be offered that seat. Additionally, non-Milton Public School kindergarten students who are registering to enter the French immersion program in grade one will enter a separate lottery and be on a waitlist for seats in the district until the start of the school year. Non-Milton Public School kindergarten students will receive a seat in French immersion if there is an open seat, and all current Milton Public School students have been accommodated in the program of their choice. At the start of the school year, all waitlists for French immersion, for the French immersion program will be eliminated. My recommendation is to implement the lottery capping plan presented for French immersion starting with the 2013-14 school year in order to promote a quality educational environment for all of our students and children.
Comments or questions? I've seen this just prior to tonight, it's been through several iterations, but this is an opportunity for people to express any opinions or ask any questions. Ms. Bagley-Johnson.
I have a question, and I'm sure I'll have comments.
You bring the mic towards you.
Oh, I have a question and I'm sure I'll have comments. But I guess this is a comment. Superintendent Gormley has, I think, been one of the biggest proponents of the French program, and the amount of work that you've all put into this is unbelievable, and it's just outstanding, and I really appreciate that.
Question about the standard elementary school building configurations. Math is not my sternest point, however. I see three hundred and thirty-two seats if the, all these classrooms are filled, is that correct? Anybody else know? Glenn, you add it up?
I did, you add it up.
Okay. So one seventy-six in English and one fifty-six in French, and I don't have the enrollment figures in front of us, I see them over there. What do we currently have now in grade one?
The current enrollment in grade one is three hundred, is three hundred and thirty students.
In both English and French?
Correct, the total enrollment.
So this gives us two more seats? If I add a grade? We have the opportunity to go up to three hundred and thirty-two students in grade one? If I add a grade?
Correct, that's with varying class size in each of the schools.
Yep.
But the amount of sections.
Okay. Just wanted to show how far off we are from where we are now. Thank you.
We have been running roughly fifteen first grades for the last few years.
And if I might, Mr. Pavlichuk, Chairman Pavlichuk, the school committee gave me feedback, the elementary principals, and I should recognize John Phelan and Sean Walsh who put a tremendous amount of time into working on this proposal with me.
Ms. Baderah?
So I think one of the slides I'm looking at, it says if more than fourteen sections of grade one are necessary, the superintendent will create any additional sections based on needs of the district. So I think you had said as long as there's two, at least two sections of English in each school, and then do you base that on the needs or do you base it on interest?
The primary goal first is to have two English classes in each of our schools, and really on the interests of the district, looking at the needs of all the children, not based, again, it's a choice program with a cap. And so we would look next year to what the choice is. It's very clear at the Glover, the Tucker, and the Collicott. At the Cunningham, this, we are taking four kindergartens, which is unusual, and we usually have three first grades. We'll have to make an additional first grade, look at what the parent choice is there.
Okay. So as years go forward, you're looking at, the first goal is to have two complete English classes each school, and then you can look at the needs of the district and make a decision if you need another class based on that.
Ms. Kelly?
Well, I'm sure we're going to have more comments, but can we define what the needs of the, a little bit more in detail what the needs of the district are? Because we talk in number of classrooms, but really it's the makeup of those classrooms, I think, unless I'm missing interpreting or anything. So in terms of what is an optimal learning environment, can we get into a little bit more detail about that, please?
Absolutely. I'd give you an example. Last spring, when we had very low class size in the two English classes at the Glover School, and we had gender imbalance, we did not have enough students to then have two for English first grades that would be able to provide for role models all through the Glover kindergarten through fifth grade. Now, over the summer, students moved in, and we're able to balance that gender, to reflect the gender balance in the district, but we cannot rely on who's going to move in during the summer. We have to create, and again, there's discussion, debate, research. When we have first grades with eighteen students beginning in the English first grades, those to me provide outstanding numbers to begin the first grade. Many of you understand, and for the viewing audience, when students move into the Milton Public Schools through first through fifth grade, they move into the English program. They don't move into the French program because of the development of the program and the French requirement and the development of the language. And so beginning those first grades at eighteen provides for over the next five years, when students move in to the district, that we're able to balance those class sides across the district. And when we look at optimal environment, we look at a balance of all of the, as best we can, we try to balance each class for all the demographics that were mentioned by the individuals during Citizen Speak.
Ms. Sheridan?
So just to take that one step further, Ms. Gormley, I think it's helpful for people, I've received questions in the last week or so about why we're looking at numbers of twenty-six for French. Why is it so high for twenty-six for French? I mean, I know the answer, but I think it's, I think it's important for the viewing public to know that as well.
Well, when we begin with twenty-six in French, and we've, over the history of the program, had different beginning numbers, we have children who are retained, we have children who leave the program, we have families who move out of the district. And so we want to provide for, after their elementary career, that we have a balanced program, English and French, and we have to look at first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grades. And so if you look at, Mr. Phelan has in front of him, again, the numbers at the fifth grade, that's really has driven why we begin those class sizes at twenty-six. Does she want to add anything?
I guess I would ask, if classroom of twenty-six at first grade is educationally sound. Regardless, I understand the need to balance at the end, but I would argue that establishing a top limit in French of twenty-six is not sound educational practice. And therefore, I would suggest that as part of this recommendation, that we establish a lower class size, whether it's twenty-five or twenty-four, that's more in line with very good, sound educational practice in terms of classroom size. That's, demographics aside, that's just how many classrooms does a teacher need to meet, need to meet the needs of.
And to Mrs. Kelly's point with people watching, Mrs. Kelly's right. When you get into the first and second grade, you know, somebody will listen to twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Each student does make a difference in those beginning first grade classrooms. So again, we're more than willing to look at those numbers for that cap in French immersion.
So just to play this out a little bit, so if people make their choices and you go ahead and assign two classrooms each at each school, what are we looking for? What will determine how you make your decision about what happens next?
You want to go, Mr. Phelan's going to address it first, and then I will.
The hope is that in, when we establish our kindergartens, that we have the same amount of classes moving up into the same amount of first grades. So the example would be at the Collicott that has four elementary kindergarten classes that move into four first grades, that we can, if we have a balanced class size, this year we'll have a balanced class size and the upcoming year. So we will look at how many students choose the program outlined in step form by Superintendent Gormley. We will ensure and place students in the English program first who choose English, and then when we look at the amount of students who choose French and what those class sizes are in English, we will start to think about what class size and how many sections of French we need that we will provide with the understanding that we want to make sure our English classes are healthy class sizes first. So ideally, the way it would work out would be that we would have at least eighteen students in both of those English classes, and if there were enough students who chose French, the balance of the students would be in the French immersion program, with some students possibly being told no, if in fact, we went over the amount of seats that we would allot in the French program.
Ms. Kelly?
Right, and so this, you know, maybe to even use the example of Cunningham and Collicott first grade this year, right? We definitely did not have enough for two and two.
Right.
So what we're saying, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not totally determined by getting to eighteen in the English.
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum, but isn't it also the demographics of the eighteen that will drive some of this decision-making as well?
The goal of the plan, to the best of our ability, is to work towards creating a healthy enough enrollment in the English program that we believe that the demographic of that student body overall will provide appropriate and optimal learning environments for the students in English. That has been the practice prior in the district when the numbers or the percentages in both programs were more stable. We always had what we felt to be English classes that had an appropriate demographic makeup, as well as there was a choice program, and choice is a choice, people choose to be there, but we always were able to maintain what I consider to be a healthy balance in our English program. As that number increases in percentage of students who chose French, and why we are here, is that that, the amount of students, that pool of students decreased, and that limited our ability to do so. So I feel if that number is reduced back to where it was several years ago, that we would be back in a position where, in this community, we would have healthy English classroom environments if the percentage of students was more balanced.
So to Mrs. Kelly's point, I thought, if you take, you referred to the Collicott. If we hypothetically use the Collicott kindergarten numbers for next year, just hypothetically. So if we had two French immersion first grades at twenty-five and twenty-five, the two English, the two English first grades would be twenty-two and twenty-two. So, and that, that would, that's ninety-four children, and there are ninety-one currently in, in the kindergarten. But if we increase the numbers in the English, we are going to cap the French immersion. So again, for the viewing audience, there were auxiliary classes, additional classes in French. We're going to cap the number of students and the number of classrooms. We are going to have more children in the English program.
Ms. Bagley-Johnson?
I think I have a comment or a question, and I want to make sure I understand this part right. So there's two classes.
So there's two classes of English, eighteen and eighteen.
Minimum.
Right, minimum. But staff would sit down, principals, or the principal would sit down is my understanding in other school districts I've worked in. And you'd say, okay, I've got six kids on IEPs, I've got, you know, two boys, I've got, you know, twelve girls, so let's mix it up. And you would do that every year, right? Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
And that's, that's probably important for the viewing audience to know. Sometimes parents send in requests for teachers based on who their older children had, or they know of a teacher. And, but what happens, the sending teachers, along with the principal and the staff at the school, sit down and they really create the classroom assignments. It's not done randomly.
So just to follow up on Ms. Bagley Jones' example, so in other school districts, let's say you have a grade one of four classrooms, you have four classrooms to do the balancing. What we're saying is when we look at the English classes, we may not have that balance. It may be that there are, I don't know what the numbers are, let's say three girls in each, each of those classrooms and the remaining of them, boys. My question to you, and this is really what I think this plan was intended, at least from my perspective to get at, was that we would need to then balance those classrooms utilizing students who had chosen to go into French. And I guess what I'd like to hear from you is that the type of balancing you're looking to do?
Well, again, it's still based on parent choice. So the kind of balancing that will be done will be, again, by capping the French immersion, having a larger number of students in the English to, to in fact balance those classes.
Let me just chime in here a little on this. In order to do that, we would have to, we, we actually asked for advice of council on this. That would create what's essentially referred to as a weighted lottery that gives preference to certain groups over other groups in an assignment process. And in, in the opinion of council, that can only be done in very limited circumstances where there's been a, a, you know, a violation of Title VI or violation of Civil Rights Act or various different things. And only when other means of trying to address the program without weighted lotteries have failed. So it was the opinion of council that if you would try to introduce a weighted lottery at this point in the process, where you say, we're gonna give preference, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna treat girls of the lottery different from boys in the lottery, different from children of low income families in the lottery, et cetera, that we would be running afoul of, of federal law. So the short answer to your question is we can't do that. We, we, we just have to work with among the people who choose English and choose French to treat those as two separate populations and do as best we can within them.
Right, and I guess what I'm suggesting, I appreciate the legal advice, because I had thought that.
That you asked, you asked, and that's why we did it.
Um, but what I'm saying is in that situation, if you then said, I cannot create classrooms of French of up to twenty-six, I would argue up to twenty-four, I might need even to make them smaller so that I can, out of the luck of the draw, hopefully, get some balance in my English classrooms. And I guess that's what I'm asking, is, is to what extent will we adjust class size in French to balance English? And I think that's what I'm getting to.
It's an excellent question.
Yes, Ms. Sharon.
So you're putting a new thought in my head, Mrs. Kelly, and I want to just continue that forward a little bit. So if we were to balance it, put more students from French into English, then would we be picking people out of order from the lottery? I mean, then, then where does the lottery go?
No, then the lottery would still be established, but the number of seats that you were choosing to fill, to fill would be less.
Right, but what if it's girls that you need and the, the last three chosen are boys?
I, I totally understand, except what we've been told is we can't do the weighting, right? So we can at, at least attempt to do some balancing. And I would argue that the way to do some balancing is to decrease the seats available in French so that through the luck of the draw, hopefully, there'll be some balancing.
It, and you're right, after you look at this and you think about it as you have, by decreasing the number in French immersion, we're increasing the number of, in English. And we're going to increase the opportunity to have representative groups in the class and optimal learning environment. And you're right, the lower that we make the French immersion numbers, that's why we set up to twenty-six. Before, in all of our work, the class size was twenty-six. Twenty-six was twenty-six was twenty-six. But again, we're going to look, and again, it gives really the superintendent the discretion to look at the demographics, look at the classroom assignments with the principals and the teachers in the individual buildings. That's why we have written up to twenty-six, there's been a tremendous amount of discussion to listening, to your suggestions, Ms. Kelly and others, do we go to twenty-five, twenty-four? Is it twenty-four to twenty-five? Again, trying to give, be as clear as we can with parents and guardians also.
I would just say, you know, for this year, especially because, you know, you have some families that this is very new and they're, you know, pretty nervous about this whole process, that in terms of this being kind of a transition year, that we, we wait and see how the initial lottery works and see if those classes are indeed balanced. I totally agree, twenty-six kids is a lot, but I'm sure a lot of people that want to get their choice would be willing to take that so they could get their choice. And then it's kind of an easy in to see after this year how this works. People can be more accepting and moving on to the next year to do even lower classes or try to balance even more. That's just my opinion.
I have a host of questions, that's why I decided to go last. But, but let-
You picked your last two.
Perhaps. Or at least I have the floor for a while, I'm sure of that. But let's stay on that for a second. John, can you talk about what the class size has been over the last three or four years in French?
The, the overall class size?
Yeah.
The current first grade is sixty-four percent French, thirty-six percent English?
I'm, I'm looking at numbers, has it been twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four?
Uh, we started at twenty-six, so at the, the first grades, we have twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. So they are hovering at the average of twenty-five.
Can you go up, second grade or fourth?
And then we're averaging around twenty-five in the second grade, twenty-five in the third grade, uh, I would say twenty-four or twenty-five in the fourth grade, and I would say twenty-four in the fifth grade, while parking each of the sections by school.
So given that, I'm not sure, and, and given the presentation that we had on performance data, and given that we're already restricting, we're, we're already creating a model where parents who want French aren't going to get French, I don't know why we would reduce the cat, the class size since there's no indication that that's affecting the performance of those students.
I would like to respond to that because I don't know, I certainly haven't seen, although I think Mary, Superintendent Gormley and I have talked about, the results. We have not had class sizes of twenty-six for the entire five, six years at, at the French level, so.
But it's, looks like it's an average of about twenty-five.
Right, so I guess the issue for me is, and I don't know what educational research says, but I don't think I've ever read something that says your initial year where you're learning your basic foundation, you should start out in a class size of twenty-six. You work in the Boston School District, what class sizes do you have for first grade?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right, you know, at one point years ago, we put a lot of effort into creating first grade classrooms of twenty-two and twenty-three. That was our goal, because we felt that it was the right educational environment to create good, sound footing for all students. And again, I understand the whole choice issue, I, I just think on principle, it, it just makes sense and quite frankly, in fairness to those first grade teachers in French, to have something that makes sense. There are some, some school districts that in their contract, they have, you can't have more, you know, classes, more students in your first grade and secondary class than a certain number. We don't have that in our contract, but I guess, again, it's one of those things that I think from an educational perspective. I, I don't know that you could evaluate, you know, the, these years, I don't know how many students have left. You know, were, were they forced to go into maybe the English section because they weren't succeeding in a classroom of twenty-six? I don't know whether we have that kind of data to evaluate.
I'm, I'm making a different point, and then I'll get on with my questions. And, and that is that we have a program that has been in great demand. It is one where we're creating a model that I'm, for the most part, in favor of, I'll get to that in a minute. But we know that that's going to create a model where we can accommodate the demand for this program that we have been able to in the past. We have performance data that suggests that the French students are performing perhaps slightly better. So why would we reduce class size?
Okay.
I do. Can, can you say a little bit more about what we mean by organizational instability, just so everyone's clear?
Absolutely. And that's a good point for the viewing audience. We have, when we described the setup in the slide, two English, two French, or two English, one French class. And over the past few years, we have changed that model. We have responded, so at the Cunningham, having only one English first grade this year and mixing it with the two classes at the Collicott, which has been successful. Or responding, again, as we have in the French immersion, with one auxiliary or two auxiliary classes. At the Glover this year, it's usually two English, two French, three French, two English. Organizationally, we're taking our staff and we're moving them all the time, every grade. And again, they're flexible, they're adaptable. But everyone understands that if you develop a team at a grade level and for two or three or four years, that team works together, teaches perfect grade levels. And again, we're, we advocate for change, we advocate when teachers want to apply to change their grade level. But the model that we have had responding and creating more French immersion classes and having less English classes has really presented a real challenge, moving teachers around, moving them to different grade levels. So when I talk about organizational stability, I wanted to be able to develop teams of teachers. I want to be able to say to two first grade teachers at the Cunningham, you're going, if you're successful and you're outstanding teachers, you're going to be able to remain two outstanding first grade teachers at the Cunningham and not have to move these staff members every year.
Great. Uh, still on, this is the impact of enrollment trend, so.
Age, excuse me.
Age three. So it, it looks like in terms of what we see, the, the impacts that decreased enrollment has created, it, it looks like this proposal will address each of those. And, and now that I'm clear on organizational instability, I can see how it will address that. But the, the one in the middle there, the fluctuation in program enrollments has resulted in an imbalance of student demographic representation in both programs. It doesn't appear to me that we have a solution that addresses that.
And if, and that's why we said it would really work towards, again, if you turn to page, responding to those, if, I believe, we said that, page thirteen, that we feel that it's only, it's going to contribute to more balanced. It's not going to, to Mrs. Kelly's point and to your question, it's going to contribute because we're going to have more children, more students in the English program. So again, it's not going to solve it completely, but our response was the outcome will be, it will contribute to more balanced student demographics because you are going to have more students, children in the English program.
I think there's probably less guarantee of that than any of the other solutions you're proposing, but. So page eleven, if more than fourteen sections, and this, we just had some discussion on, on this. More than fourteen sections are necessary, the superintendent will create additional sections based on needs of the district. And I'm still not clear on what the criteria are by which you would determine the needs of the district.
Mr. Phelan wants to answer that first and then I'll contribute.
If he didn't, he does now.
He asked.
The, the needs of the district as described by Superintendent Gormley earlier are ensuring quality dynamics in the classroom. And when we do look at those two teachers looking to divide students up as described by member Jones, Bagley Jones, do we have enough students where we can assign a classroom that we feel will be representative of a quality demographic that will ensure a teacher's ability to address all student learners? I think there's a lot of things that would come under the needs of the district in terms of whether you would decide to make one class additional French or one class additional English. And I think you would look at the entire enrollment of that grade coming up. Our enrollment has been hovering around three forty, but it could be back to three hundred. So you have to look at what does each class size look like? And does that class, individual class at each school represent a quality learning environment for every child? I do believe that that is what we set out to do. And when we say that that last criterion referred to in the previous question was maybe not being fully met, when you have a choice program, which we would like to maintain a choice program, that is going to be a variable that still remains to a certain degree. Our goal is to pull the percentages back to a point where we had felt that we were successful in providing those types of classroom environments in previous years, when the percentages hovered in a more balanced format. So from our past experience in working with first grades in the Milton Public Schools and having a choice program, we feel if we can work towards balancing those classes, and when we look at what the needs of the district are, it's balanced class size and balanced classes within each school that represent dynamics that ensure quality learning environments.
Well, from a parent's perspective, and I suppose from a school committee member's perspective, I might, like a little more specificity, but it sounds like that's.
Well, yeah, ask a further question and I'll give you some more.
Well, it, the, the question is, if, if there is great demand, if, if there's great demand for French and the superintendent has to make a decision about whether to create another, well, we, we have a real life situation in Cunningham. So superintendent has to make a decision as to whether to create a French section or an English section. How will she do that? What are, what are the criteria that she might use to make that judgment? So I just, I started to try to write them down, you said size, how, how, how big the, the section is. But I'm sure there are more that go into the question of optimal learning environment and.
But before we get into the Cunningham example, the, the one example would be we wouldn't want a class size of twelve and twelve. It'd be guaranteed running two English sections, we wouldn't want a class size of twelve and twelve, that might be not, that might not be budgetarily effective or an efficient allocation of resources. So we would want to ensure that we maybe not have an extra class of French and we want to ensure that we have higher class size in English. So it could be budgetary, budgetarily viewed, it could be class dynamic viewed, it could be the overall percentage in the district or in that school view. I do believe that that is going to be an annual concern of parents as to what is that number or that class size maximum that you may have for friendship? If I have sixty folks who want to go to friendship at one of the schools and there's only so many seats, they're gonna always advocate for the highest possible class size because they would like their child to be in the program. We fully understand that and we respect that, but the first thing we would do is address, does every child have a classroom that's a, that, that is an optimal learning environment? Are there any budgetary implications of this? Are any class sizes too low and they wouldn't be responsible to run? And those types of pieces of data we would look at before we would try to accommodate a higher class size to accommodate the folks who would like that choice program.
So to your point.
That's helpful.
And it would, it could be, we're not counting out, it could be English or it could be French. And we would have to explain our decision on which language the program was in. But let's go to this year. Historically, we have had one auxiliary class. And this year, when it came down to really, one of the Cunningham classes being French immersion and an auxiliary class, the imbalance was created. This is going to cap the French immersion so that that does not happen again. And everyone will understand, all parents will understand what the, the dynamics are of the lottery. of the lottery and the expectations that they should have going into first grade.
And this would work the same way in subsequent years in the event we had to create more than fourteen sections of grade one, that then superintendent would make that decision?
I, I have a couple of comments and questions, but I just want to follow up on that. So, if we went over the fourteen classes that the buildings were built for, what would we lose? And that's just to raise that, right?
What would we lose?
Physically, what-
The issue, I mean, it's been asked, could you put, just make Cunningham a four-unit school?
No.
And the issue is, we don't-
They kind of get what?
A four-unit school, a four of each, four-strand school. The problem is, we don't have enough classrooms to add a fourth in each grade. What we've done over time with the auxiliary classes, if a school had an available classroom for the auxiliary class there, they would track through for their five years. Generally speaking, most schools have one extra room, maybe two, that we could use for that. And so, that's why the auxiliary class was rotating around from, from, from building to building, because the buildings get full. If we get to a point where we're, we're hitting sixteen first grade classes, we're going to have a real trouble, because we really don't have those number of classes across the physical campus to have sixteen, sixteen in each grade. Because once you have them in first grade, you, they will have them in the next couple of grades anyway. You know, they may fizzle a little by fifth or something, but probably not.
Right.
And we really don't have, you know, eighty, one through, okay, one, uh, grade one through five classrooms anywhere in the four schools. And, so, I mean, there will be an issue.
So, that was my point, I'm sorry. That was my point, is that we don't physically have the space. And also, what would we take away? For example, would we put preschool kids in a non-preschool classroom that received money to build them as preschools?
So, so what's happening now is that through your school building project and your commitment to the state and the donation from the Copeland and the Cunningham Foundation, you've built in these fabulous schools, full-day kindergarten classrooms, built to code. I'm with superintendents and I'll say, why don't you have full-day kindergarten? They don't have the room for them. And so, the preschool children are in rooms that are built to code, fabulous rooms for preschool and kindergartens. So, to Chairman Pavlicek's remark, we, when a fifth grade moves out of a school, when we have an, when we have a classroom that we can use, we've charted out over the next five years, if we have an extra classroom, we, the different schools that those will have to go to. For the viewing public and the parents to know, at the Tucker and, at the Tucker and at the Glover, Fless is, goes to the classrooms. But at the Collycock Cunningham, there's a dedicated Fless room where the children go for their Fless classes. We have art and music rooms. At the Tucker, we have one room for art and music, because they can both use it, it's on separate days. But on the size of the Collycock Cunningham and Glover, you have to have a dedicated art room and a dedicated music room, because the art and music is happening four or five days during the week. And so, you've just, the community, the town has built these fabulous buildings. It's important to have this dedicated space for art and music. And so, we, we've looked thoughtfully at, if we have a high enrollment in kindergarten, where those first grades will go over the next five years. And I believe the point Ms. Bagley Jones is getting to, our priority is to keep those dedicated art and music rooms for all of the students in the Milton Public Schools.
I have other comments or questions. So, you also, someone mentioned the small class size is a class of twelve and twelve is not physically responsible, but it's also not physically imposs- possible to do because of the size, you know, we can't give up a classroom for twelve kids and then, you know, put another twelve out on the street. We can't do that. Or, anyway, so, I think there's a couple of reasons. I have a couple of questions I would, and I know I've asked for this before. I'd really like exit data on why kids leave French immersion class, and I'd like it kept over the years. I just think it helps us build the program, and this has been a great program, as has the English. My kids have done both. I think they're both great. But I do think the lack of a cap when the program was developed, and no insults to the folks that developed it, they did a great job, but I believe we got data that most, if not all, other immersion programs in the country all have a cap. And we're this unique facility program district that doesn't have a cap. I think that's a program oversight. I, I think there's a reason the others have caps, and I think there aren't many superintendents who would be willing to take this one, given the difficulty in this. So, it's to the leadership's team credit. Regarding the class size, when my son was in grade one French, there were twenty-six kids in the class. It was a large class, but the teacher was particularly good at roping parents in to come in and run math groups and do all that. And people might say, well, if you work, you can't do that. I worked outside of the home, and I was able to get in there a little bit early and run some math groups out in the hallway. Well, I worked with five kids, she worked with kids, and somebody else worked with kids. And I think the French program did a good job with that, and I don't know if they still do, but to me, that's another way of doing it. But I picked French, knowing that my son would have twenty-five other kids in the class with him. And I did it. I thought that would be a good setting for him. I did not think that was a good setting for my other child. So, I didn't pick it for her. And I do hear the concerns about siblings, I really do. I mean, I have siblings, I had siblings when I was growing up, but I have two kids. I really wanted them in the same school. That was the most important thing to me. I didn't want to have to do drop-off and pickup at a couple of different schools, but I also wanted to be involved in the Collycock and the Pierce and the high school. I didn't want to be going to all these different schools. And I think the educational practice would show us that when parents are involved in their schools, we have stronger schools, we have better academic results. It's about the reading to your kids. One of the problems we encountered in grade one in French is that we don't read French. And so, there wasn't any reading going on in my family that was in French. But there was a lot of other reading that went on. So, I think that it's important to keep kids in the same schools that are siblings, but I don't necessarily think the same program is a God-given right. I think that kids should be in the same school. I think when we do SIBs, sorry to go on and on, but I'll make points out at once, when we do SIBs only, the only's, meaning the only child, and the oldest child get left out. If you give siblings preference, if you only have one child, you don't get preference. If you have an older child, you don't get preference. So, those two groups of parents protested loudly when we did the World, spoke loudly, not protested. They brought up that point quite frequently when we did the World Language Committee, and they're right. In terms of current kindergarten teachers, uh, children being left out of the pipeline, pre-K parents have approached me. They feel like they should be in the pipeline. Where do we draw the line? Where do we say, okay, we can't do it anymore? I get, I empathize, sympathize with the current K children, parents and their children, but the pre-K, you can have a child in grade one and a pre-K children, or a pre-one child, you know, they have different levels, or a kid in daycare, and you want them in the same program. So, where do we draw the line on that? I feel like this is the time to draw the line, I'll just be so bold to say that. And then, the other thing about size is that I do really think the Cotot classrooms are the best-kept secret in Milton. When my daughter was in grade four, she had, which I did not know, I should have known at the time, it was called the Cotot. It wasn't called the Cotot, but it was. It was a special ed teacher and a regular ed teacher, and it was one of the best educational experiences in this incredibly great school system that my kids had. And that's not to put down any other experiences. Small class and two teachers helping all the kids, so nobody had to be pulled out of re, for recess room. Everybody got all their education in one room from either teacher, and it was wonderful. Two more points, then I'll stop. One more point. We can't address it tonight, but one of the concerns I've really had, and I know it's already started, is the lobbying of Superintendent Gormley from parents about getting their child into the program. And I know she's very strong, and I know that the leadership team can withstand that, but I just want to put it out there that we are going to be a wave of parents coming at us. And I would just like to ask the committee if we can think outside of this meeting or later time, some ways to back up Superintendent Gormley and Assistant Superintendent Phelan, because they are going to get an incredible amount of pressure, and I believe it's already started, from parents to get their child into the program. And that worries me, because that's just going to keep. So, those are all sort of disparate points, but thank you. That's it.
Ms. Eric.
I have some comments to make, but I just want to follow up on that last point. I think that with the cap and the lottery, there is no, all of that is gone. You know, all of that lobbying for your child to get in is gone. So, when it's a lottery, it's a public lottery. Names are picked, and it is what it is. The numbers are, are there.
And in, and behalf of the administration, we've always followed the rules. There isn't anybody who can come forward that said that they weren't treated equally to everyone else.
Right. And that's not what I implied to-
I know that.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's, I'm worried about the pressure on you guys. That's all.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I, I wanted to just talk about the plan as a whole, but also kind of frame it from the comments that we heard tonight from the parents that spoke. I think you've done an incredible job at really taking a lot of, we've heard input, as was said, from many, many people. And I think you've done an incredible job at, at just pulling this all together into a plan while clearly articulating what the challenges were that we face as a district, but also, you know, coming up with a thoughtful plan. And I think that it does indeed consider the rights and needs of children with special needs. I think if we talked about the straddle families that were, were discussed tonight, you know, where would you cut off? Where would the cutoff be for that? The sibling issue, I agree with Ms. Bagley Jones, you know, how can you say siblings are more important than the first child or the, the only child? So, that's- Did I say something bad? Doesn't that bad? I think I just lost my- So, anyway, right, about siblings. So, I think that, you know, your plan really is, is a fair plan in terms of all of that. I, like you, Ms. Bagley Jones, and I'm sure all of us have heard from parents who have, you know, cho- chosen to do outside kindergarten, but again, it's a plan that's fair and equitable. And now, parents will be informed, and if they have a child that they really want to be considered for the French immersion, then they have the option to put them in Milton Public School full-day kindergarten program, or half-day kindergarten program for free. And I finally would just like to say that these plans, any plan that's made, is based really on the best information available at that time. But that information changes. I mean, we haven't had this problem with this. Our enrollment numbers have increased, and the numbers of students choosing French, or families choosing French, have increased. So, the, the data changed, the information that became available to us changed. And, and I think that when this was conceived twenty-five years ago, that they never really anticipated the need for a cap. So, I applaud this administration for taking this bold stand and working to, to fix this, to make it better.
Mr. Walker, continue. You're all set? Ms. Kelly.
I just do want to touch on the-
Oh, excuse me.
The issue of non-Milton Public School kindergarten students and them being in a separate group. Right now, at least given the details you've presented to us, if, and I don't know how many come from outside yearly, but if, I don't know that we even have enough room to create another classroom right now of kindergarten. And I think we have enough divisiveness in our programs and in our neighborhoods because of those programs, and where we've had to put people, et cetera, what schools are at, that we're creating another group that's, that's separate, but not equal, I guess. And that concerns me. If some, to me, I think there's definitely a different category when you come to register the Milton Public Schools after the given deadline. But if you have all your papers in order, your registration information, et cetera, done with whatever that deadline is for everyone else, I don't know why we don't put everyone in the same pool. I have spoke with the administration, and they've expressed some of their concerns around that. But again, it's one of those things where we continually divide people, and I would much rather we be pulled on together. So, that's my opinion on that.
Ms. Eric.
I'd just like to say that I think the waitlist is a really good option, is, provides more clarity and upfrontness as well, because you know exactly where you stand, not only when you choose classes, but also afterwards. So, you know, who knows where you are, but things do change. People do move out even, you know, ahead of times out of the French program, or people move in and they need to make more room in, um, there's less room in English and they move people over to French. So, to have that, it gives people a lifeline, a little bit of knowing exactly where they stand, but at the same time, they can still plan, you know, they're, you know, hopefully in their own homeschool, and they can plan for that. So, that's one of my, um, parts of the plan I, I did like a lot. And the other thing, I just wanted to backtrack on the class sizes, is that from my understanding, this is before I was a Milton Public School parent, one of the problems that came about with people moving into the district later is more kids went into English, and the English class sizes got high. So, we don't want to create smaller classes in French, where that might look appealing when they're doing well, and create higher, too high of classes in English when kids move in and create this, this higher level, because I think that that might have been one of the reasons people started opting out. They'd see these really high classes in fourth and fifth grade, which is an optimal as well. So, we want to be careful that that doesn't affect making those smaller, making these bigger. You have to have a balance on both sides.
Ms. Kelly.
Just one more question. In Glover and Tucker, where we say we want to, at least two English classes in each, one of the, one of the classes is the Cotot, which has a total, a cap, i- i- a mandated cap of eighteen.
Yet, yet one issue indicated last week, but it's the fifth grade divided during the day is twenty.
But, but I guess I'm, I'm wondering what that does to the dynamics we want to create in terms of the balance? And how that, you know, whether we've really done some examples of that? And, uh-
I'll look at that.
How that works? Because somehow, I, I think that those, because of the class size limit, I think it's going to limit your flexibility to create balanced classrooms, I think. But I guess I would need to dive into all of it.
I, I would look into that. I would also say to yours and Mr. Walker's question, when you have, if you had an additional kindergarten at the Glover, hypothetically looking at this, and again, you're looking at role models, whether, again, that's one of the issues for the next five years that would drive three English first grades. It would provide you with an increased number of students in English on behalf of all of the children in the district, that you could rotate children in and out as role models in the Cotot program. But I'll look to that question that you asked about the Glover Cotot.
That's what I was going to ask about Superintendent Gormley, is the role models, they could be changed up every year, and that might help us do some balancing as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that would probably be good for them, even though, like I said, the Cotot's the best-kept secret in terms of services for children with IEPs and children without IEPs. And then, my other question was, can you just be really clear for me and for others, I'm sure, when does the waitlist end? Is it September first?
We, we had a lot of deliberation on this, the first day of school.
First day of school. First day of school, the waitlist is over.
Anything else? Mr. Walker?
So, this is a question for my colleagues, so as not to surprise anyone and make a motion. Is there any reason why we should wait two weeks to vote on this?
I think you're asking us.
I am.
Kelly.
I, I believe we discussed this very clearly at our last meeting, and that's why we discussed it, was if we wanted to hear and vote tonight, I think that's what we should have told the public. I think that was presented publicly at our last meeting, and therefore, I think we should hold to that schedule. I don't know that I've heard anything that would make me believe that someone's going to vote against this, but perhaps there will be. But I think it's giving people an opportunity to express their opinion on this and for us to hear it. It's part of the democratic process.
This is one, I'm not going to argue the point, but I think everyone who's wanted an opportunity to be heard on this has had an opportunity to be heard, but I can wait.
All right. Ms. Beck, can I-
I can wait as well, but I think we're prolonging a painful process.
So do I.
And I think that it is painful on the parents who are waiting. I think it's painful- I think it's painful on how they're going. But I mean, I understand and I don't want to shut anybody else from commenting. I, I don't know. I also think an incredible amount of energy, as it should, has gone into this, but we also have a school district to run. The, I mean, these folks at this end of the table have a school district to run. I don't know. So, I mean, I'll do, we can wait for two weeks, but waiting for two weeks is fine. I just wanted to voice concern about waiting.
Yep. Anything else on the committee on this?
So the date would be what if we don't take a vote? Two weeks from?
Our next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight.
The seventeenth.
Can I just say what I was...
Ms. Sherrill.
We had discussed having a meeting next week and I was going to bring this up when we looked at our calendar. But I guess I would say if we're not going to have a meeting next week to hear from folks, I mean, it wasn't going to be an open meeting. My understanding was it was just an opportunity for people to come in and speak. As usual, we don't respond to citizen speak at that time. But is that still the case? Because if we're not going to have that meeting, then I, then I would agree with Mr. Walker that there probably isn't a need to wait any longer.
Is that the... I thought, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I also thought we were going to have a meeting, but I thought that was kind of up in the air as well. I, you know, I thought we discussed it, but there was no, yes, we're going to have a meeting on the tenth.
No, I think we had, we had just left it as, don't schedule anything on the tenth in case we needed a, a, a meeting that night. That's as far as it's gone, as far as I know. So unless I hear someone calling for a meeting next Wednesday, I'm going to assume our next meeting is two weeks from tonight on the seventeenth. Ms. Kelly.
Just, um, do we intend to have an extended citizen speak at that meeting? If that's our, their only opportunity to express their opinion?
We can do that. I mean, we can, we can waive our policy to extend citizen speak beyond the usual time. We will have to be a little careful about the length of the agenda, but we can, we can pick a time that fits with our agenda. I mean, fifteen minutes probably is too little. Two hours is probably too much. So somehow or other, we can find something that will give people a chance to speak and we should hopefully still be able to get through what we need to get through in two weeks. Because we do have some votes that are time-sensitive and need to be taken, so.
But you're saying the speaking time would still be up to three minutes?
Yes.
Not fifteen?
No, no. Citizen speaking, our, in our agenda, says a fifteen-minute total. And what I'm just saying is that fifteen minutes says a total time for citizen speak may not be sufficient. But on the same time, we, you know, we have to adjourn by midnight, open meeting law. And we have things we have to do in two weeks, too. Ms. Kelly.
Is this the first time, I don't know whether this has been presented to any other public groups, this is the first time? So this is the first time that people are seeing this? Is that correct?
Would we want...
Yes.
Would we want to start at six-thirty on the seventeenth?
I, I will ask Charlene to poll people. I don't know what people's schedules are like. Oftentimes, it's hard to get here much earlier than seven.
Yep.
We can ask Charlene to poll folks and see if they can or would want to come at seven, six-thirty, if that's an issue, so. I mean, it's hard to sit here and say unless we all start pulling out, Kelly.
Right.
Which is hardly entertaining TV viewing. Ms. Kelly.
Just, we have been receiving emails from people expressing their opinion. I think people should continue doing that. You know, if they don't want to come up to citizen speak at the next meeting and they'd like to convey their opinions, I think that they should email us all and listen.
School Committee, one word, schoolcommittee@miltonps.org goes to all of us. You don't have to try to figure out six different email addresses. But schoolcommittee, one word, at miltonps.org goes to all of us. And usually, I like to try to respond on behalf of the committee, but when you get a couple hundred a day, sometimes it's a little difficult. So I apologize in advance if I don't acknowledge you get it, but we do read them. We do get them all into our own favorite little email box somewhere, whether it's MiltonPS.org or a bounce to wherever we read our email. But we do, we do get them and we do read them.
Chairman Pavlicek, as of eight-thirty tomorrow, the presentation will be on the web.
Anything else on this? All right. On your report, we have a couple of people who are here for presentations are actually in the room, so we could maybe possibly move a couple of these up. Under my report, we had a briefing from Rick Neely of the Town Government Study Committee. So I'd like to invite him up to the table. It's all right. And after that, we'll bring up the Health Committee and we'll bring Jacque here. Good evening, Rick.
Chairman.
Does any of this look familiar for former school committee member Neely?
This is midpoint in my career, probably around 20 years ago. So I think Superintendent Gormly was the principal at Cunningham at that point.
He was. And now Mr. Neely's, had the Neely children and now Mr. Neely's daughter is a star teacher at the PS school.
All right.
Welcome.
I would also acknowledge that Mr. Walker's a member of our committee, so feel free to jump in, Lori. Anything I misspeak about or you want to supplement?
I don't think... He's not shy enough.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come before the committee to give everybody an update as to what our committee's been doing. As many of you know, we were actually formed together, formed as a group in the end of last calendar year. We ended up with eight members appointed by the selectmen, two members appointed by the moderator. And you recall, the history of this was that there was a town meeting last fall in which there was a residence petition, if you will, that did not pass. But the author of that, Michael Joyce, is one of the members that was appointed by the moderator to the committee. So in fact, we've had a series of meetings starting February 16th. And in our second meeting, what we did was essentially, in this building, have a whiteboard session where we brainstormed and brought together a series of ideas. And I should just lead into that by saying that the Tom Hurley, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, really gave us a charge that was very broad. And that charge included such things, for example, as considering regionalization, consolidation of services, technology changes or improvements, creation of a town manager and/or CFO position for the town, and various combinations of town services. So there was not a detailed, specific charge, it was very broad. And as a result of that, we felt the need to have this whiteboard session where we had members of the committee get together and we threw up on the wall in the whiteboard about 50 ideas or so. And we consolidated those 50 or so ideas into about 11 topical areas. And for example, we came up with a financial category, a technology category, governance category, planning category, regionalization, revenue enhancement, and municipal service delivery. So after about 10 meetings, we've been meeting since February and we've met along the way with the police chief, the DPW director, cemetery superintendent, and some members of his, her board, excuse me, the park superintendent, some members of the board. We've also met with Matt Gillis, who joined us one night, along with the town accountant. We've had Bob Patterson was here one night for one of our meetings, along with Jim Skroy, who is the town's IT person. We've also had the planning board chairman and the prior planning board chairman, Emily Ennis, was at one of our meetings, town treasurer. And basically, as we've met with these groups, we've been putting together a series of recommendations. And we are considering, again, a number of topics. And I'll just give you some examples. One is maintaining representative town meeting by reducing the size of it. That's under consideration. We've also looked at other towns in the neighboring area, such as what Braintree, Weymouth, Randolph had done. We've had those discussions, looking at that in terms of what their former government has become over the last few years. And it's important to consider here that the study committee itself is not just a brand-new committee. I mean, one of the things I want to point out is that the history is that the town has engaged in these type of reviews over a 50-year period. So for example, the studies we're doing date way back to the fact that, let me give you an example, the water department was a separate board, a three-member board. The sewer department was a separate, elected, three-member board. Each had their own staff, each were independent. So over a series of years, those were consolidated into the Department of Public Works. Foresty Department was consolidated in the Department of Public Works. So there's been a series of continuous changes and improvements over the last 50 years and not an abrupt change that you've seen frankly in some of the other neighboring towns. So as we've, at this point here, we actually have approved as a committee two, two recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. And you recall, we earned a mandate to provide the Board of Selectmen with a December 1 report. Our terms expire November 30th. Some or all of us may be renewed, depending on how their feelings are. In any case, we do have to make a report to town meeting. And they say we've, at this point, come up with two recommendations, which I'll speak to in a minute. But some of the other ideas that have been floated before the committee includes moving the town election to after the town meeting. So in addition to potentially cutting the size of town meeting and reducing the size of it, we're talking about potentially changing. And part of the thought process in these examples would be to create more competition and more response to the citizens. So right now, it's been considered fairly easy in recent years to get elected to town meeting member without campaigning or without going out and presenting one's position and enlightening the voters. So there is some thought to a modest reduction in town meeting to encourage competition and to get the represent, town meeting representatives to meet with and speak with their constituents. Other ideas that have come up include reinstituting, enhancing the prior pilot program that's existed. And we'll be discussing that tomorrow night. I know the Board of Sessions is going to join us tomorrow night. They've also been reviewing the pilot program. And that's something that's been on and off over the years. The hot topic right now is strengthening the town administrator's position because, as you know, the turnover that's occurred in that position and the board has asked us to look at that. And Mr. Walker has been very involved in assisting us on that. And so the committee has been working with him and he's made recommendations to the committee. And we are, have been, as a committee as a whole, been looking at expanding the duties of the town administrator. And some of those ideas, ideas that may need home rule petition or may need state approval. So it would need town meeting and then actually the home rule petition. Other ideas are actually just decisions that the Board of Selectmen would have to make, what to delegate and whether they're comfortable delegating certain duties currently that historically were performed by the town administrator. So those are some examples there. We did express support prior to town meeting for an updated comprehensive master plan with a broad community representation. We don't think, by the way, it should be limited to just the visioning phase. We think it should be throughout the whole process, so that's something we continue to support. And let me just jump to a couple of these recommendations and be willing to answer questions or respond to things. Maybe Mr. Walker, Lori, do you want to speak to the IT one? Do you want to, I brought it with me, but I can...
Sure.
Something you want to feed into it?
Either one.
All right. So why don't I start with the finance one? At this point here, we have passed a recommendation that we did approve. And just to quickly in summary, what the recommendation is, you know, after looking at a meeting with the various, some of the financial officials in the town, we just think that at this point in time, that there's not a coordinated approach to the setting of financial goals and objectives in the town and that operational priority setting within the town is fragmented. We think the information technology and support for financial accounting, payroll, and reporting system need strengthening and we need a coordinated approach across all department lines. And as we've gone through the review of this, what we've come across is the fact that the Department of Revenue, Bureau of Local Services, actually has a group that has gone out and done over 230 financial reviews for cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth over the last 20 years. Milton has never been one of those. We believe it's, we're going to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, and we'll be sending this up to them very shortly, a recommendation that in fact recommends that a financial review be done to look at and meet with all of the departments in the town, to understand exactly the processes that exist and to come up with recommendations for changes and just to, you know, give us a feel of what is really going on. It's not something frankly a committee can do, meeting part-time. And let me give you an example. The town of Arlington just had one done, finished in January 2012. And it reads town and school financial analysis. And for example, the kind of work that these, this team of local staff do is to do flow charting. They do this flow charting of what the accounts payable process is that involves the schools, involves the town. And it goes through and also looks at the town and school payroll procedures. And it links in and identifies the work that frankly, you know, lay citizens aren't going to do two hours a week. So when you get a team of recognized experts that have gone throughout 230 cities and towns, they can come in and meet with the people throughout the various town departments to understand how our processes are and frankly, to find the best practices that we can adopt in this town. Again, without, you know, in 20, more than 20 years, we haven't participated in that and I think we do, should do that. It is not a service that's charged to the towns, it's a free service. So you do need to get in queue and it would require a request by the Board of Selectmen. And I would ask that the school committee participate is certainly your choice. It is done in other towns with the school committee in some cases, it's done without the school committee in some cases. So it is optional. If the school committee chooses not to directly participate, it still would result in the fact that when we bring in, if the Board of Selectmen agree and we bring in the Bureau of Local Services, they're going to interview people throughout the town. So they're going to interview the various departments. I think the opportunity here is to be one of the leaders and be, you know, right in from the very beginning and help meet with the team officials. Again, you will see throughout the state, there are various forms of financial services. You have directors of finance that have been created throughout the Commonwealth. Some of those include the schools in a minority of cases, Barnesville, Harvard are a few examples, where the schools have been county-wise and finance-wise brought in with the rest of the town. But the key is to, has been also the creation of directors of finance or chief financial, as you want to call it. If the town doesn't want to adopt that, it's its choice. The town can choose to ignore the study, can choose to adopt certain sections. Again, at minimum, you're going to get a review that tells you the best practices that we ought to be adopting and help us identify the financial software that would enable us to have better reporting and better accounting. And it processes, you know, as I said, processes improvements and efficiencies. So that's the lengthy summary, I guess, would you say? Is that...
Nice job.
Nice job.
All right. I'll take, I'll take a stab at the IT one, which the author, Mr. Walker...
I'll do it.
Okay. You want the paper?
No, I don't need the paper. So we talked with, as Rick said, the DPW director, town accountant, Matt, town treasurer, police chief, parks and recreation chair. And in, in all of these conversations, as well as Bob and Bob Patterson and Jim Skroy, in all of these conversations, there was a theme that developed, which quite simply was how technology could be more helpful in creating more effectiveness, more efficiency, better customer service, better integration. And it was just clear that we were missing some of those opportunities. Now, I need to be clear that with regard to the schools, we're talking about the business operations side, not technology in the classrooms. But our thought was that we needed some way to close this gap quickly. So it is likely that we will recommend to the selectmen that they engage a consultant that can help the town and the schools, the business operations side, create what we're calling a technology strategic plan. But we've, we've got to find a way to close this gap quickly and we think that's probably the best way to do it.
I would agree that it's really difficult with the change in technology that's occurring so quickly. And the latest development of course is the cloud. And it just seems that the town needs to be up to speed as to what is going on and which direction it wants to adopt. So I would echo Mr. Walker's comments that the strategic plan is something that the town desperately needs going forward. So that's a quick summary and I'd be happy to take questions or, Matt, you were there, if you had any questions or comments from back then.
Any questions for, yes, Ms. Bagley Jones.
Just a couple of things. I was, I must admit, I probably shouldn't say this, but when you, when you refer speaking, it's like, what is that for the schools? And then you very aptly, I'm honest, you very aptly described what it does have to do with the schools. And that was very interesting to see the thing that you held up about Arlington. And I'd love for us to get a copy of that, just to think about really the town and the school department under Superintendent Gormly, we've worked really hard to be better integrated and it's just exciting to think about doing that even more. So I revised my earlier opinion about what is that to do with the schools. Can you just say for the pub, oh, and what was the committee or the group you said that does these free, the 200...
This is the Department, Department of Revenue has a division called the Bureau of Local Services. The Bureau of Local Services has a series of teams that go out and do a series, you know, they'll do a study. It's not a one-day study. They'll spend, you know, I don't know, it's a week or two weeks in the town. And they do probably about four or five a year, it appears from the report. So I have actually a listing. And all this material that I cited is on their website. The study I held up is on the website. But they do a series of... But they do a series of studies that, again, we, we, the town, would drive that study. But it is from the Bureau of Local Services, and it's called the Financial Management Assistance Program. And in this brochure, which is again on the website, is a list of every city and town and the type of study that they had done. In some cases, you can't tell whether the schools were a co-partner or just a beneficiary or participant, but...
Thank you.
And some of the ones, you know, they've had occasion, other towns have done certain ones on certain dedicated projects or, you know, limited, narrow scope projects. But I think the opportunity here is also to get the advantage of the expertise in terms of the financial information technology and software that the town uses and see, wait a minute, are we using the right software and other upgrades or other products that we should be using to see that would provide better reporting? Because remember, we have the Treasurer's Office, the Assessor's Office, the Warrant Committee, the Town Accountant's Office, the School Department. The Cemetery has its own Perpetual Care Fund in its accounting that goes through the Town Accountant's Office. The Park Department has some of its revolving funds. So there's a series of buckets of money that are located under various controls, and it would be helpful to have everybody take a look at that. Mr. Gillis?
Since I attended that meeting, the town and the school department have moved to work towards some of the things that were brought up there actually by myself and the Town Accountant on that evening. The town has gone to an online cash book and receipts that's integrated with the general ledger system, which will improve the, the timing of how quickly we can put out financial reports, which will be accurate with showing what, what the revenues are and the cash on hand. The schools training is, actually starts tomorrow. I got, I got the, the link up on my computer today, and I'll be going through it with several folks tomorrow. And they've been doing it on the town side for the better part of the last month. So it's live, it's working, we're just going through it one at a time. The next thing that, that we'll be working on is the integration of, of the payroll system, which will be more work than integrating of the, the Treasurer's books right into the system, so that things populate right into the general ledger. The general ledger itself is, is solid and works fine. It's the other pieces that we want to, you know, tie in, so it is one complete integrated system. And, and we're working on that. And if, if Fundware can't get there with all the pieces we want, there are other packages out there. The two most common ones are Munis and Budget Sense or Fund Sense, whatever it's called now. And they're now owned both by the same company, Tyler. So I'm not sure how that's going to change the price of Munis's, you know, they bought their largest competitor in the state a few months ago. So it'll be interesting to see how, how far we can come in the remainder of the year and what you have to report out at town meeting. Because if we continue to move the way we have been, we should have, we should have some more information from when, if I took my notes correctly, when your December one report out to the Selectmen, we should, between then and May, we should have some updates for you.
That's great, we support those efforts, and anything that helps provide, you know, better service and better efficiencies in reporting is something that makes sense.
Yes, I'll go. For the people that generate the reports, you know, we support that as well.
Ms. Kelly?
Do we know how long that queue is?
No, we don't, not at this point.
Is that, it's pretty important to get a review done before we make any major changes. So with whatever speed you can present your recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, I would recommend it.
This particular recommendation, along with the IT recommendation, will be in the hands this month.
Excellent, great, great.
Division of Local Services does good work on, on these things. I've worked with them before back in our days on the Warrant Committee. It's interesting, I'm interested to see what Arlington doing this, because I'm, I'm familiar with some of the folks at the, on the Finance Committee, as they're called in Arlington. And unlike St. Milton where we rotate on every two or three years, I, I think the junior member of that board had been on there for twenty-some years, and they were all, they were all finance professionals. I mean, so they had a wealth of information at their fingertips as to how to run the town. And for them to be jumping in and doing this too, just, I think also speaks to the value of it. I mean, they, they are people who could easily do this, but to have DLR, DLS come in, Divisional Services come in and do this, I think is, I think is well worthwhile doing.
Anything else for Mr. Neil? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bagley Jones, would you like to move up here one, um...
Yes.
Help committee, uh, report, and then we'll move back into the Superintendent's.
Thank you.
Jacqueline, she's...
Yes, she is. So we will move on to the, just the, the one item under nine I of the Wellness Policy Re-approval.
Can I just ask, so am I asking for approval within eight minutes, or am I tabling all that?
We don't approve your minutes.
It shouldn't say approval, I'm just...
We will gladly accept them, but we, we don't approve them.
So accept versus approve. That was my mistake.
Approving the policy.
Well, we're approving the policy.
Yes, it's two things.
Oh, right, yes.
So that's what I'm asking, should I table the rest of the health discussions?
We'll come back to your minutes.
Got it.
All right, well, let's, let's deal with the policy right now. So the, the item is what is on the agenda as nine I, a policy, IHAMD, the Wellness Policy.
Got it.
So, Ms. Bagley Jones, if you'd like to tell us what we're doing.
So this is Jacqueline Morgan, Food Director, Milton Public Schools Director of Food Services, did I get it right?
Perfect.
Jackie has been an incredible member of our Health and Wellness Committee, and she has driven us around this Wellness Policy. It's her job, and...
Microphone, Miss Bagley Jones.
We are mandated to do this policy that covers four areas, and there's been a lot of controversy and talk about it because some of the issues that it raised, but those controversial issues has sort of gone away. So the Health and Wellness Committee has looked at this each year. We have to vote on it in Health and Wellness, which we have. We've made suggestions and changes, and then Jackie brings it back to the Policy Committee. We talked about it here, we had some questions, so it seemed to make sense to have Jackie come and answer the questions.
Thanks for having me. The Wellness Policy is now mandated in two different locations. So it's, it's mandated from our National School Lunch Program and the federal stature. And this past year, the State of Massachusetts, State of Massachusetts passed food policy and food regulations. And in those regulations, it also required a food, a Wellness Policy. So it's two different places now, so we're doing a great job with it. Both of the policies ask for the four specific language of food available on campus, nutrition education, physical activity, and other school-based activities. So that's very important for everyone to know, those four things have to be specific and have to be talked about in this policy. So at our, at our most recent meeting we just had last week, many of you know, it's been very confusing over the summer with the State of Massachusetts regulations. When we met in June, we had very strong strict regulations that were going to go into effect in August. And then our state legislature met and changed the school nutrition law for Massachusetts, which has been very confusing for school districts everywhere in Massachusetts. So we changed the language, we looked at our policy, we wanted to be very specific to cover the law. The foods available, the foods available on campus thirty minutes before school, during the school day, and thirty minutes after school have now been changed to school stores, vending machines, and school cafeterias. That is the change of the law. And a lot of this was done to make sure that fundraising wasn't interfered with and to allow districts to make their own decisions. So we did change the policy, and you'll see that in your Foods Available on Campus. And the other thing that we discussed at great length was foods available in the classroom. For many reasons, we have a lot of children with food allergies. A lot of us talked about at this committee, just, you know, disturbing classes with cupcake parties and sundae parties. So another change that we had put in here is that... The first bullet under Foods Available on Campus covers the, the new law that I spoke about, and that no foods will be allowed during the school day in the classroom with the exception of students' individual snacks from home. So that's our change. And I also, at our last school committee, you had asked me to, to condense it and make it smaller. So we took out the list of all the different activities we have available for the students and all the different clubs and all of the different sports to make that a little smaller.
Jack, can I just interrupt for a minute? There were changes made by the government that you have in the policy, but then our subcommittee also discussed whether or not things like pizza and sundaes and brownies should be allowed in the classroom. So that is not part of the federal or state policy, but it was what we talked about in Health and Wellness.
So the state changed in June, which was, timing was very difficult for school systems, because a lot of us had the old policy, and we had put that in writing, and we, people were putting it in handbooks, and they were doing a great job across the state, and then in June, the language was changed. So the language now, and we changed it in our policy to reflect the new language, it's thirty minutes before school, all day during school, and thirty minutes after school for school stores, vending machines, and school cafeterias. That's the new Massachusetts food guidelines, have to be specific for those three things. And then it left the rest of the decision-making to the districts of how to handle food in the schools during the school day.
You want to speak to this from the Policy Subcommittee?
I would. So there are just a couple of things I think it's worth highlighting that are in here, and it comes under the, the heading of Food Available on Campus. You've already identified the thirty minutes before and the thirty minutes after school. And Jackie, you briefly addressed the issue of fundraising. So my understanding is, and please clarify that, um, schools are allowed, PTOs are allowed to hold fundraisers that involve food that does not meet this criteria during the school day, as long as it's not sold to students. Is that correct?
That's all a district-wide decision now.
That's our decision.
Okay, so we're not putting it in the policy, is what I'm saying?
You can put it in the policy. PTOs can have bake sales as long as they do not sell the items to students.
It doesn't have to go in, in the policy if you don't think it needs to go there? I just was looking for some clarification.
It's up to Ms. Morgan whether it has to, in this Bagley Jones.
Well, one of the la, one of the, the last bullets under Food Available on Campus, it is recognized that there may be occasions or events when the school administration may allow a school group to deviate from this policy. I think that...
And that covers it. Just a few others that I just wanted to, obviously the ones that pertain to the school food service program are all up to code, and you do a great job at all of that. But just a few others, sodas will not be available to students in vending machines or in classroom activities during the school day. And I'm reading these just for parents to hear. Classroom celebrations will feature healthy food selections, prepackaged foods will continue to be encouraged. And we've highlighted the other ones already, so. This, the Policy Subcommittee really felt strongly that we didn't need to weigh in on this, that it was really a Wellness Committee issue. And so we're thankful for your work on that.
And I think something that needs to be mentioned is the, the Health and Wellness Committee is a very dynamic group of people. It's well-balanced, it has parents, administration, it has adjustment councils, it has food service, we have our Board of Health Nurse, we have, um...
Cats.
Community members. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's the place to be the last Friday, I'll tell you. But it's really, and we have two school committee members now, which is great. So I just, you know, when you look around the room and you see the passion and the beliefs and the discussions, you know that it's a very well-represented group of people.
And Jackie brings healthy breakfast. On the policy though, under Middle School, second page, Physical Education, we had decided to take off minimum of seventy classes. It should just be, will help, be held regularly, period. And then under High School, it should say Physical Education, Physical Education, Health and Grades, ninth through twelve will be offered.
Will be held regularly and offered to all students each year.
Yeah, because we're, we don't feel like we can determine the number of minutes or the number of classes. So it shouldn't be in a policy. So we had, we had voted to take those two things out. Right, John and Mary?
We did, that's correct.
Yes.
Could you read that, those again, the first one, under Middle School?
On second page, Middle School, Physical Education, Health will be held regularly, period. Nutrition and eating disorders will be addressed in grade eight. Then under High School, Physical Education, Health and Grades Nine through Twelve will be regularly offered. Or offered regularly, whatever the correct language is.
Mr. Walker, you have a question?
I did, they're actually growing by the minute.
Oh, no.
So let's stay on that one for a second. So is this language with a minimum of seventy and with a minimum of ninety, is that from the federal requirements? Or is that something we put in?
My understanding, and Mary and John helped me out on this from Steve Tracer, is that that's what we've been offering, and that's what we would, he would like us very much to still offer, and we'd like to offer. But in case of budget cuts or whatever, we can't say this is a policy that we must offer ninety and seventy.
Okay, so that's language...
We'd like to, but we...
Language we created in terms.
Right, in practice that we've been doing for, forever.
So on the point of whether this last bullet under Food Available on Campus covers the, the, um, situations that Ms. Sheridan just discussed, I think there's a difference between those situations that are not covered by the policy and those instances where, um, school administration may allow deviations from the policy. Those are two different things. So I would say that if there are situations involving parents and bake sales that aren't covered by the policy, we should say that. To be clear, because in that case, we're not allowing them to deviate, we're saying it's not covered, which is something that we should be clear, clear about. So I, I would suggest that we do add that bullet that says for bake sales where parents or PTOs have bake sales and are not selling to students, that's not covered by the policy.
So therefore it's allowed?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
The issue, the pushback from our food service directors?
Well, we do have a new, no food or beverage should be sold to students during the school day except from the school food service program.
That's a, but that's addressing a different situation, I would suggest.
Ms. Trager?
I think PTO bake sales are usually after school. So the, the question, I mean, that would be my question is, because we did talk about it.
We did.
But there, you're only allowing them to sell to a parent, so if parents aren't there or physically with their child at the time, I mean, that, that happens a lot with the kids running up or they're waiting for the, you know, waiting for their parent to pick them up. Are you only allowing them, in that case, to sell to a parent? And, or, because they're thirty minutes after the school day or within that thirty minutes, it's after the school day. I know during the day, no one can sell food to the students except food service, but we kind of talked about that.
This is more the school day.
Okay.
And then I know there's a lot of before-school math clubs and before-school activities, and there's after-school activities and plays, and so I think the committee felt strongly to focus on the school day and the thirty minutes before and thirty minutes after are only those three things, school stores, vending machines, and school cafeterias.
And I think, I mean, I thought your recommendation was a good one as well, that in all cases that you can do this to have food labeled and packaged.
Yeah, and when we first did our Wellness Policy, we had requested that to have, if anything was going to be brought in during those times, to be prepackaged, as parents can read the label, older children will understand their allergies and can read the labels. But the, the huge potential of cross-contamination of a mom or dad who just made a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and then takes that knife to cut the brownies is a huge, huge potential for disaster. Where it's a prepackaged item, it's labeled, it will say if it's in a, in a factory or a bakery with nuts or not with nuts, is it seed-free, is it not? All of those are right on labels, which I know parents with children of allergies really appreciate commercially prepackaged foods.
Ms. Sheridan?
I, I wasn't done.
Oh, she was going to respond to this, though, I think.
I was just gonna, yeah, the question about the bake sales. So I was thinking specifically about Election Day coming up, and I know that PTOs use that as a, a very great source of income when they do bake sales during the day. So that's where, no? Not in schools?
I don't think they're in the school anymore, really.
No, me and, uh, the high school, the technical school. I'm not, you know, not the high school, in kind of...
So it seems like they're selling that to adults who are coming in to vote?
Right, right.
So as Ms. Gormly would say, if I might, uh, my recommendation is that we have a bullet that addresses PTO activities. And then my last question is, the bullet, I, I think this needs a little clarity. The bullet that says food is not a disciplinary consequence, what does that mean?
In the very beginning of when Wellness Policies were created, we were giving a lot of guidance, we were giving a lot of documentation from all different agencies, USDA, Net School Nutrition Association of America, and a lot of... USDA, Net School Nutrition Association of America. And a lot of the language asked for that to be in, so that a child wouldn't be denied lunch if they weren't behaving. A child wouldn't be denied his, his or her snack from home for poor behavior. A child would never be punished, you know, goes both, or rewarded with food. That, you know, eating a well-balanced meal should never be part of a disciplinary.
So, that, that makes sense to me, but I think so that everyone understands what the guidance is, I think I would say, for example.
Can do that.
Anything else in this? So, we have a few suggested edits.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, um.
We'll add them and discuss them in the next meeting.
This is essentially our first reading of this, so we, we incorporate the edits and, and send them back to us, and we'll do this as a second reading in our next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
Short hiatus, we'll go back to the superintendent's report.
Uh, I'd like to invite to the table Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Personnel, John Fallon, and our newly-appointed Milton High School Math and Business Department Head, Courtney Walsh. Courtney, will you join us at the table?
Looks like she's going to be by herself. Mr. Fallon just ran out.
She's setting up the presentation. She's trying to give some exercise.
And so, in our attempt at every one of the meetings being respectful of the agenda, we're going to have a presentation tonight by John and Courtney on MCAS. We've broken out this presentation. John's going to present with different administrators at each meeting, new aspect of the MCAS reporting. So, welcome, Courtney. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Superintendent Gormly. I am very delighted to be here tonight and presenting with Courtney Walsh, who came to the district in July of the summer. We stole her from a neighboring district that we will not name, and she has stepped into her role as the department head of math and technology and business at the high school in extraordinary manner. She came to us just when the state said out loud that they were changing the level system and the accountability system for all schools in the state. And we had a conference call in August, and Courtney was already up to task with everything that was happening in terms of this new accountability system. So, I appreciate her expertise. She presented to the leadership team when she first met them, she was already presenting to them, and she presented to the entire faculty in August as well. So, the state has changed all of the terminology and the accountability formatting and mechanisms for all of its public schools and charter schools. And as Superintendent Gormly stated, we'd like to get everybody up to speed with what this terminology is and how these statuses are formulated. So, when we present our data at the October seventeenth meeting, we will have all that information at our disposal. The first thing we'd like to talk about is the terminology that we used to be familiar with is AYP, annual yearly progress, is now being replaced by the new terminology, which is PPI, which stands for Progress Performance Index. And essentially, every district is going to be measured by this PPI index, and it's going to have its own no child left behind goal, which used to be becoming proficient by 2014 for all students. To replace that new goal with reducing proficiency gaps by 2017 in half. So, basically, they're going to figure out a, a target for us where we have a gap, and they're going to say, if you can get to half of that gap by 2017, then that will be what your expectation is. Schools and districts will be categorized by level, which is new to us in our, our local districts, by level one through five, instead of the categories that we had previously been used, which were needs improvement, proficient, et cetera. The PPI calculation will include student growth in ELA and math, and along with achievement. So, to just equate that to things that we already know, CPI are the terms like how many students are proficient, how many students are advanced. That measures how well the achievement of our students or our schools or our district, at what level they are achieving. And student growth is that model that we introduced last year, where students are measured by how much growth they made from one year to the next, or how much growth a school building has made from one year to the next, or how much growth a district has made from one year to the next. So, there's two different pieces of data that will be used to formulate this level designation by the state. Measures of new, excuse me, achievement CPI include science next year, and the reason why student growth does not include science is because you need previous years of scores to, to demonstrate that growth. So, in a few years, when we have a few years of science data that quote counts, they'll be able to do student growth data for science, math, and English. But the state will only measure science in the CPI portion until they get that, that previous data in the future. So, what I mean by that is this is the first year that science counts. And the only way that you can measure student growth is by going back four years, because the formula goes back four years. So, after they get four years of science data, they will begin to use science as a student growth figure.
Is science taken every year?
Science has been taken every year, but it has not been counted towards your, your level or your statewide accountability status.
So, every, every year, every grade takes science? That's what I guess?
No. Fifth grade, eighth grade, tenth grade.
Right. So, they're going to do growth from fifth grade to eighth grade? What's the mo, unless he, they?
They haven't introduced the model for putting science into the growth yet.
Okay.
Measures for, uh, that are new to us are our high needs group, which will be calculated as well. That would be traditionally called our subgroups. And the PPI calculation now gives credit for increasing the percentage of students in advanced. In the CPI, in, in the CPI calculation provides, the CPI calculation provides no points, points for this.
So, now, what we'd like to do is just delve into that number of PPI a little bit more closely. So, when you think about this new PPI value, again, the Progress and Performance Index, there's really four different categories. The first two are counting for all of your elementary, middle, and high schools. The last two categories are high school-specific. So, the PPI value is made up of your achievement data, which is the CPI value, the same number we have been looking at even with AYP. But again, we're now looking at CPI values for ELA, math, and science. Second category is your growth category, which again is that SGP value, which we're only looking at ELA and math. And then, if you're talking about a high school specifically, we're adding two more categories that go into that overall PPI category, which is your graduation rate and annual dropout rate. So, to focus specifically on the CPI value, again, it's for ELA, math, and science.
Mm-hmm.
So, for this, the CPI target with last year's AYP model, the no child left behind legislation said that every single student had to reach a hundred percent proficiency by the year 2017. And so, looking at that old model, it didn't matter where the school or the individual student or the individual district was starting from. Everybody had to meet that final target of, of one hundred percent proficiency, and I'm sorry, that was, that was for the year 2014. So, this is what our target was last year. Now, with this new PPI model, instead of reaching a hundred percent proficiency, we're looking at reducing the proficiency gap by half. And so, when you're having a number, it depends on where the districts had started initially to figure out where your target's going to be. So, we have two different examples up here. If we want to first look at the top example, which is in blue, if a school district had started at a CPI value of seventy-six, they needed to make up twenty-four points to get to a hundred. But we don't actually have to reach that one hundred target. So, instead, we take that number twenty-four, cut it in half, which gives you twelve, add the twelve to seventy-six, and it means by 2017, that school or potentially that district would have to reach a goal of eighty-eight. And that would show that the school district had reduced their proficiency gap by half by 2017. Looking at another value, and these are just examples, these are not Milton-specific, looking at another value, if a school district had started at seventy, at sixty-seven point four, reducing their proficiency gap by half means that they had to reach a target of eighty-three point seven. So, even though both school districts have to reduce their proficiency gap by half, that overall number, that ending number in 2017 is different, depending on where the school had started to begin with, with the current year.
May I ask, so Courtney, translated for the public, everyone was on a goal of 2014, having to reach a hundred percent. So, now, the state has stepped back and made an attempt to have more realistic goals for school districts in their growth model.
Exactly. So, it's the same goal, but the individual targets are more attainable for each individual school district based on where they are right now.
And extended from 2014 to 2017.
Correct.
And put us on really new trajectories.
Correct. Cumul, the CPI acronym is Cumulative Proficiency Index. So, that's just looking at whether a student had scored in the Needs Improvement Proficient or Advanced category. Additionally, just thinking about the achievement portion of this new PPI value, another great thing that the state has decided is that they'll award districts extra credit points, and you'll see where those points come into, into play later on, for reducing the number of students in the, in the warning, failing category, and also by improving the number of students who move from the proficient category into the advanced category. So, by reducing the amount of students in warning and failing by ten percent, you receive extra credit points. And you'll see, again, where the, those numbers come into play a little bit later. And by moving ten percent of your population into the advanced category, you're also going to receive extra credit. Whereas, before, if we were just talking proficiency, the actual proficient category and the advanced category were kind of all lumped together, and we weren't getting any credit for students moving from proficient up to advanced, because they were essentially one category when you were thinking about that goal of one hundred percent.
In, if I may?
Sure.
With this particular category, this to me gives significance about no child being left behind. So, this drives us to take this data and look at every single child's score, every single student's score, and to look at what you're going to do, what program are you going to place for students who have failed, to move them up, and again, moving towards that goal of everyone being in the achieve, the highest achievement level, pushing and challenging all students.
Exactly.
So, it really gives credit for moving students on the trajectory.
Correct.
And Superintendent Gormly, I think that that fits the strategies that in Milton Public Schools we use quite frequently, where we are always focusing on both sides of that equation, where we're always trying to scaffold our instruction and our success for students who may need supports to access the curriculum and do better from that warning or failing category. But always keeping in mind that we want to access, have open access for opportunity for students to higher-level coursework, higher-level expectations, and push every student into that proficient and advanced at the same time. So, attacking that student achievement issue from both sides of that equation, I think, is something that we try to do in Milton Public Schools. So, this fits into what we would like to see as our strategy here in Milton. Courtney talked about the achievement piece, which is the, the information that you're familiar with, how many students are advanced, proficient, et cetera. And the second piece of this equation is the student growth percentile. This was introduced just two years ago into the dialogue or into the conversation, and we wanted to make sure that we reminded folks how this was derived and what it looked like as well. If you remember correctly, this chart is one that is given out by the state to show exactly where your district would be. And this chart is used to show and give a graph as to where your, your school system is in terms of their student achievement on the left. What is your level of student achievement in your district? And the axis going across is what is the growth of your student achievement going across the horizontal axis. So, everything or every score that's inside this middle band between forty and sixty is exactly where the state says you should be. Any score or set of scores that is beyond that, in terms of student growth, are excellent scores. So, where you really want to be is right up here, where you have high student growth, and you're continuing to grow at the level that the state is saying is on target. Anything beyond over here shows exceptional student growth that particular year. So, this happens to be math, and if we put in the chart that populated that graph, we could see that this is the math student growth for each grade throughout the district. So, as an example, who, who is this exceptional group over here? That's grade five across the district, had a median student growth percentile of seventy-three. The state says anything beyond sixty is, is very, very good. So, we're seeing that the entire fifth grade, not only is at a high level of achievement already, because we're already at the eightieth percentile over here for student achievement in the CPI form, but these folks made great student growth on top of that, already good success. Over here, we have the district, that's the biggest ball. The district itself is at a very high level of student achievement in math, and our growth continues to be very strong, almost at the, almost at the outside of this growth band to the exceptional side of the growth in terms of how the state measures us. So, each one of these dots represents a grade. Each one of these grades, this is their math score in terms of its student growth percentile. And as a district, you can see that we are making great progress. And people should note that the higher you are up in your student growth or your student achievement, the harder it is to have growth. It's almost like you're squeezing a lot of water out of that rock, and there's really not as much water left. So, we're really getting great student achievement results, and we're really still growing as a district. We're actually having students move forward each year in progressing, and that's exactly what the state is measuring.
So, the reason that third grade isn't there is because there's no growth to show, right?
Correct. The student growth is.
And they'll be that same lighting, same thirty minutes.
That's great. Thank you. The, the student growth is, the formula is based on what you were last year and how you did this year. So, that third-grade group won't be able to report it out on their growth until they have fourth-grade scores to compare themselves to. Thank you.
Can I just ask, what's the end students in that SGP, and then performance level? What's the difference in those numbers? So, see?
I see the two categories that say the number of students. So, the number, the end students for the SGP are the number of students who we have growth data for, and that could be lower than the number of students we have a proficiency level for, because they may have moved in from out of state, so we don't have growth data for them. But we would have a proficiency data, because they took the test for maybe one year in our district or in the state of Massachusetts. So, for example, if you look at grade four, there were two hundred and seventy-two students who had SGP values to look at, but two hundred and eighty-nine students actually took the exam. So, there could be that fluctuation of students moving in from outside of the state, meaning they didn't take MCAS in third grade, so we don't have an SGP value for them.
And so, if we can go down to grade ten, that would mean that two hundred and two students we have data for, but, but thirty new students basically are in the mix?
Correct. And it could, and thank you for pointing that out, it could also be students coming from a private school, it, or parochial, just meaning that they did not take MCAS. Correct.
So, four hundred and fifty students out of two thousand and sixty students, are usually having?
Looking at the all grades, the question is, is it unusual to have approximately four hundred students who you do not have student growth data for? I haven't looked at other districts to see if that's a number that's, that's unusual.
For this district, it seems high.
But does that include the third grade, though? Or no?
It, it very well may contain the third grade, which would be three hundred and twenty students of that four hundred.
Exactly. Yeah.
So, if you added up the difference between these numbers.
The difference between, yeah.
Between each of the four, grade four through ten, and then you measured whether or not that third grade was balanced, that might be what the number is.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions in this slide? So, just to give you a visual, this was the first section that Courtney went over. This is the traditional look at how we measured our student achievement through MCAS, how many folks are in advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning and failing. They add that to the information that we just talked about, and they create their own formula. I won't pretend to be able to tell you what that formula is. Courtney may be a math person, I'm certainly not. But the formula basically weighs those in a certain fashion that gives you ultimately what your PPI score would be for all of our elementary, middle folks. And then, also, as she noted earlier, high school folks would add in two more pieces of data, which is the graduation rate and the dropout rate.
Correct. So, again, just to reiterate that fact, if we were talking about the high school, we would have two additional pieces of data, the graduation rate and the annual dropout rate, and we'll see how those numbers come into play on this next slide. So now that we know what the specific groups and categories are that make up that PPI value, these are the core indicators where you're actually getting your numbers from. So if you look at the first three rows, you can see that we have data for the ELA CPI, data for the math CPI, as well as the science CPI. So your school, or if you're looking at the whole district, would receive a score somewhere between 0 and 100 for each of those categories. Then moving to the next piece of data that we would be looking at, which is the SGP, you would have a score from 0 to 100 for your ELA SGP, a score from 0 to 100 for your math SGP, which closes out that category, because again, we're not looking at science SGP. Additionally, if you were looking at the PPI value for a high school, you would add in one single number that represents your graduation rate from 0 to 100, and another value that represents your annual dropout rate from 0 to 100. So if you were looking at an elementary or a middle school, you would only have data for five of those seven core indicators. So once you find your total, you divide by the number of core indicators that you're talking about. So for elementary and middle, you would divide by five, and for high school, you would divide by seven, which gives you your overall PPI value.
So an example may clarify that process.
So these are the actual scores for the Milton School District for 2012. So going through each of the core indicators, the first thing I want to point out is that when we say you're given a number from 0 to 100, they actually go in increments of 25. So even though you see 75s there, we could not have gotten 80 or 85 or that sort of thing. The numbers go from 0 to 25 to 50, 75, and 100 being the maximum. So overall, as a district, for our ELA achievement level, we scored a 75, which is right on target. It means we weren't in that exceptional category of 100, but we were right on target. 75 is the number you want to hit. Additionally, thinking about those extra credit points, we did receive extra credit for increasing the percent of students in the Advanced category, and when you go back, if you have the slides in front of you, if we were looking at the potential for extra credit, there were two different categories, moving students into Advanced category and moving students out of the Warning-Failing. Each of those, you could only receive up to 25 points. So that's why we see 25 extra credit points for increasing the percent in Advanced.
And we could have perhaps gotten 50?
We could have perhaps gotten 50, but no more than 50. Correct. Math CPI, again, was 75, and for the same category, we earned 25 extra credit for the growth, and science, again, 75, and extra credit for increasing the percent in Advanced. Question?
So our score before adding extra credit was 50, is that what-
It was 75.
75.
So we're going to get-
It was 75, and we're going to get an extra 25?
Correct. So now, yeah.
So we'll see that as the final calculation here. If you just ignore the extra credit for now, we had the 75, 75, 75, and those are the numbers in the range from 0 to 100. Then moving on to our next category, the ELA growth for the district, we actually earned maximum amount of points at 100. Math SGP, we earned 75, so we were right on target. When looking at the district data, they do include those other two categories because we have a high school in our district, so our graduation rate, 75, right on target, annual dropout rate, 75, on target. So if you were to add up all of those values, and also included the 75 total points in extra credit, because we received 325s, you're still only dividing by 7. So that's where the extra credit really helps us in the end. So by taking a total and dividing by 7, that's where you'd see the number 89. So 89 is our PPI value for the school year, for the 2012 data. The other number that you see down the bottom is actually the number that you would see reported out in the newspaper or wherever you're looking at your data, which is your cumulative PPI. So the state actually went back and calculated, using this model, the past four previous years, and they have a weighted way of giving you a cumulative PPI in the end. So if you had seen that number, 93, and now you're wondering why is there an 89, 89 is for this year, and 93 is for the past four years.
Yes. So when we were here and we provided a memo about the scores, we provided a packet with all the resources that were online, all of that information is available to folks to look at, to show what the formula is that makes these numbers up, what the numbers are that create the formula for the last four years, and what the weighted average looks like and how they construct that formula.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Courtney, as Mr. Walker said, if I might, on the graduation rate and the dropout rate, to get 100 points, do you have to have nobody dropping out and everybody, do you know off the, do you know, we'll have to look into that because-
We'll have to look into that.
We have a high graduation rate, and we have a very low dropout rate, and so to me, it's almost perfect.
Right.
But you can only get 100 or 75.
Correct.
We'll have to look into that.
I'll have to, exactly. Again, you can't go in between the 75 and 100. I don't know off the top of my head what that 100 points is.
We'll look into that, report back.
Sure.
Ms. Sheridan, have a question.
So I was just going to say, so this is the presentation that you made at our last meeting, the story about-
Correct.
MCAS data. This is the proof in the pudding right there, correct?
So our annual PPI this year is an 89, and the state says that 75 is good, and anything above 75 is very good. So we are, as a district, with our high school, including all of our other five schools, our PPI is an 89, well above the state expectation of a 75. And if you average in the last four years of the district, meaning the scores previous to this year, and the weighted formula that they have provided, our actual average as a district is a 93 based on the last four years of our scores. So they're not saying out loud that, hey, you're just as good as your last one year. They're always keeping you accountable for a period of four years backwards for your scores. The year that you're in is weighted heaviest, the year, the next year is weighted a little less, a little less, and a little less. So that's what the weighted formula looks like. So you get the most points for the year that you're in, and then you have less value placed on the other, the previous three years. So to Lynda Lee Sheridan's observation, the district is in very good standing at this point in time. And I think it also should be noted, and we'll note, that the percentages of, it is very difficult to have your percentage of students in Warning and Failing increased, because we don't have as many students failing, so the percentage that you have to satisfy might not be statistically possible, because if you only have two students in English in 8th grade that are failing a warning, even if you got both of them out, that might not be enough percentage increase to warrant the 25 bonus points. So we have more, we're more apt to get points for extra credit in raising to Advanced than we would with Warning and Failing. So the cumulative PPI calculations for 2009 through 2012, again, this is the four years in a formula that represents what our current scores are, the district in the aggregate has a PPI value of 93, well above the 75 that the state says is where people should be. In our High Needs, which is going to be translated for you in a moment, which is our, basically the subgroups with whom we work, as defined by a slide that we'll show you in a moment, our subgroups are at an 85, based on this formula that every single city and town in public school is evaluated on. At the Collycott, we have a 98 in the aggregate, and our High Needs are 88. Our aggregate score at the Cunningham is 100, High Needs 88. Glover, 100, High Needs 89. Tucker, 78, High Needs 78. Pierce, 92, High Needs 82, and I believe that's the high school, is 97, with its High Needs at an 87. So this is how we are measured for our levels, and we are a Level 1 district, and we feel that we are making some very good strides. You want to ask about what makes up the aggregate and what makes up the High Needs, because those definitions and terms have changed. Essentially, when the state gives you your level status, they base your level on the points earned by all students first and foremost, and the students in the High Needs area include students who are low-income, special education, and ELL learners. You have to have at least 30 students in your school or 30 students in your district to have that weighted into your formula. Every student, again, is given its own CPI and its own PPI, so when you look at the big picture, this is what your school system, in your schools, are given their levels on. And all the other students that you may view as what we would formally call subgroups, they are also built into the All Student Score, and they will also be given their own individual PPI. So the hard stretch, I think, for the public to kind of wrap their head around will be that the district will be rated on this CPI model where, I mean, this PPI model where they have to have a certain number. They're going to be given a number that they have to have by 2017. Each building will be given that number that they have to have, and each one of these student groups will be given that number. So if we have 30 students or more who are African-American, Black, then that student group will have its own PPI value that we have to have by 2017. If we have students who are Hispanic or Latino, then those students will have their own number that we have to have. So they basically customize the PPI expectations for each one of those subgroups. They don't report it out in this High Needs and this All Students when they level you, but every school will get a PPI expectation for each one of the subgroups that they have in their school district.
Ms. Sheridan?
Yeah?
Two questions around that, so I would take you for that explanation that you just gave. Does that mean that 30 students per school are-
Does that mean that 30 students per school, or is it 30 students per grade in those subgroups?
When you assess the school, it would be the school, and when you assess the district, it would be the district. So it would be 30, if the district had 10 students who were Latino in Collycott, they wouldn't be graded, they wouldn't have a CPI for that subgroup. However, if there were four schools that had 10 students of that demographic, the district would be measured for that demographic group, because there was a total of more than 30 for the entire district.
And then under B, on number 2B, it says ELL, English Language Learners, or former English Language Learners, we call them FLAP, students who've been FLAP. How long, so that's students who have been English Language Learners, but they have basically tested out and they no longer need ELL services? How long do they remain under that High Needs student status? Do you know that?
I don't know.
FLAP students?
Your definitions are correct. For the folks at home who don't know what these terms mean, students who tested when they enter school or when they entered the district for their English proficiency, and they are, if they do have a concern about their level of language in the area of English, then they would receive special services. They would be considered ELL students. When we work with those students over a period of time, they are annually tested twice a year, and if in fact their English improves, they FLAP out, meaning their services are no longer needed to that degree, but they are still considered a concerned category because their English might not be as well-versed in the academic area, so they are still counted as High Needs. I don't know how many years that they are, would be considered FLAP students?
I think it might be two years, but if I'm wrong, we'll correct that publicly.
Okay. Questions?
So we, sorry. So we know that the Milton Public School District was rated a Level 1, so we just wanted to quickly talk about what the different levels were. Level 1 means that the school scored a PPI of 75 or higher in both the aggregate and the High Needs subgroup. So if you think about that last slide that Mr. Phelan had showed us, every single one of those numbers for the aggregate and for the High Needs subgroup was above 75, which is why we are a Level 1 school district. Level 2 would mean that one of those numbers fell below 75 in either the aggregate or the High Needs and at any of the schools. So they really are focusing on every single number being above 75. A Level 3 school district is, means that your district has a school that scored in the lowest 20 percent relative to other schools in the same grade span, or for the aggregate in one or more, in the aggregate or for one or more of the subgroups. A Level 4 school, a district, means that a school in the district is among the lowest achieving and least improving Level 3 schools statewide, and Level 5 is basically the state saying that they have not made improvements based on their redesign plan.
So to Courtney's point, the whole district is measured by every single school and every single score, so you're only as good as the lowest score or the lowest scoring school in your district. So as all of our schools were Level 1, the district becomes a Level 1. So if any one of the schools was not a Level 1 school, then the whole district would move down to the level of that school. So we, quite frankly, applaud the state for the new formula. We believe it reflects the school system's work towards achieving growth for every student that we serve. We believe that the level system seems to be one that is fair and well-thought-out, and we look forward to, along with the community and other communities across the state, to really get to know what these levels mean and how these formulas work as we start to work through the data, which we have been doing. The last thing we want to talk about is all the parents will receive their child's individual report card. They look exactly the same as they did last year. I'm going to throw up an extra one that's, I have to do it through a PDF, so excuse me. They were mailed out to everybody today. So everybody will get a report card.
Microphone, John.
Yeah. Every family will get a report card that will state the child's name, the demographic data. It will explain what the test results look like. I apologize for the formatting here.
Courtney, if you want to use that mic at any time.
It will tell you your child's score in each of its areas of Language Arts, Math, and Science. It describes what the levels mean. That is what you would consider to be your CPI data. Then below, it will capture the growth percentile data for your child and your child's school and the district as compared to the state. So it gives you that comparison data right across for every single score that you have, and then it actually gives you a plot of where your child stood in terms of its growth percentile in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and not in Science, because student growth is not measured in Science. Down below, it will give you an item analysis of your child's scores in relation to the questions that they answered in each of the tests that they took, and it will indicate which question was correctly answered and if one was incorrectly answered. This is the type of data that we will look at as a system through our department meetings and through our work this Friday in our Professional Development Day. I personally sat, for example, with Marilyn Decker, the K-12 Science Director, and she had the 8th grade scores out by exactly how the 8th graders did for every single question on the exam that they took, where we as an 8th grade group scored higher than the state, the same as the state, and lower than the state, and looking at those items in terms of, are they representative of biology question? Is it a physics question? And now digging into that data in relation to curriculum assessment and teaching instruction is what work, is what, the type of work that will be done throughout the year, but more importantly, part of the work that we do on Friday in our Professional Development Day. So we look forward for parents to looking at this data. They should look at it and prepare to bring it to their child's conference in November when they do report card conferences. This is something that if they would like to bring with them, to ask to be explained in more detail. Our teachers will be prepared and ready to talk to each individual child and family about what these scores mean in relation to their work in their school and their classroom each day.
Excellent.
Does anybody have any questions about the process?
I do. To this finishing point about the MCAS being sent out, I think one of the most poignant experiences I've had around MCAS and assessment was James Jett, the high school principal, when he was the PS principal, asking students, did you sit down with your parents to talk about your MCAS scores? And it really took me back years ago, and he encouraged, through his newsletters, encouraged parents to sit down with their children and talk about their MCAS scores, so that the mail doesn't come and it's put away. Now, we understand the technicality in a lot of this data, but at our open, at our PTO meetings, your principals, and especially, as Mr. Phelan said, your classroom teachers at your November conferences, and at any time you want to make an appointment with a Milton Public School teacher, they can go over this MCAS data with you, so you can better talk to your child about it. And so to my theory, to finish the triangle, the teacher has the information, the parent has the information, the child has to own the information. And so I'll never forget when James Jett asked children and went up to children and then said, go home and talk about, ask your parents about their MCAS scores, and he actually set up individual teachers sitting down with students going over their MCAS data, so that they understood. data so that they understood, they understood how they had achieved. Excellent presentation, both of you. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
So just to make sure I understand this correctly, the CPI data includes everyone who's taken the test. The SGP data includes only those students that have data against which to create the growth percentile. So on page eleven, where you have the graph of advanced proficient needs improvement and warning, is that, is that Milton's data or is that just an example? Like, does that, that, does category still exist?
The, the category still exists, that's, that's what makes up your CPI. The data on the right is actual student data from Milton Public Schools. That's, that was our math data that we showed to you live from the 2012 administration of the MCAS.
So what is, I guess I'm asking for Milton's CPI data in the graphs. Do we have that? Is that?
We do. This, this graph that we're looking at on the left right here is actually the percent for the entire district in math for 2012.
Okay. And do we have it for the other?
So, so our job tonight was only to provide you what CPI and PPI and what the process and the terminology meant.
Okay.
I will be back at the seventeenth meeting to give you all the data in terms of the district-wide data for the, for the 2012 administration of MCAS, and then we have already scheduled each of our schools to come and give that data to you specifically, building by building.
Great.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Quick question on page seventeen with the subgroups. You had said that each one would get a number assigned to them. Are they different? And what would be, you know, do Latino students get a different number?
Depends where they are.
Hmm?
Depends where they are and where they're headed.
But...
So, so the...
The trajectory is...
The answer to that is yes.
Okay.
So if you go back to...
And while John Phelan's looking for this, John Phelan and Courtney Walsh have done this presentation to educate all of our teachers and staff, and we have a philosophy that kindergarten, pre-K through twelve own this data. So they did the tutorial for the administrative staff at a very intricate level, and then they did it for our entire staff.
So to use the example that's in the TAN, every single subgroup of thirty or more students, the district will be given a CPI value here?
Okay, so the difference is based on?
Where they are.
Where they are, combined with where they're at, combined with how they grew. They're going to, they're going to get, just like the district got a number based on zero to a hundred, every subgroup will get a number, zero to a hundred, as every student, like you just saw in the individual report cards, gets a number, zero to a hundred. So each, each person gets their own, that's the formula that they use that's consistent across all groups, district to building to subgroup.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Yes, totally.
Ms. Kelly?
But in the calculation, you're measuring a cohort of students who in 2016 won't be there, for some of them, right? Like your, your, your high school, high-needs groups will be, you'll be benchmarking their performance against what you're hoping people behind them will be performing, right?
So student growth is basically, I'm achieving at an annual level at a certain rate and at a certain level.
Right.
And my student growth percentile is based on how, I get grouped with a bunch of folks, and then I'm compared from 2011 to 2012 as to how I did versus that group of folks that you put me in with, given my academic history over the period of time. I remember introducing student growth percentile to the group, and we all had a hard time wrapping our head around, how do you, how do you get that score? How does a school get a student growth score? How does a child get it at the same time? And how does a district get it at the same time? And, and I only say it out loud by saying that every individual child has a peer group that he is given based on his previous educational student achievement background, and that's what he's measured against year to year. So he may, if he does well two years in a row, advance to a whole 'nother pool of folks that's at a higher level that he is then competing against for his SGP in, in future years, depending on his success. So you don't get stuck with the same group of folks you're with all the time. It really does add up over time, and you are, you could change groups with the better student achievement that you have over time.
And I guess what I'm saying is, I totally understand the individual component of it.
Yeah.
What I'm now trying to apply is the district component of it, because we're, we're starting at a given point and saying you have so many years to get to this certain point based on this cohort of students in their performance right now.
No, no, that's only part of the calculation.
Okay.
Based on this formula. Well, it's the hundred.
Yeah.
It's based on, that, that district is based on this. So as a district, when you add up all your scores, and you have a ninety-three here, look at now, this year we're eighty-nine, but if you averaged our score over the last four years, we're ninety-three. So they keep averaging your score, that cumulative PPI, each year that will get you up to that, that mark you need to be. I mean, I, I...
But so is our, our goal going to be like ninety-seven or ninety-nine or a hundred? That's where...
The goal that we're cutting in half is the CPI value, which is different than the PPI value, which gets confusing.
Right.
So I think what you're asking for just the CPI having goal, they took the district's data in 2011, and based on that number, they went up to a hundred and subtracted it out. So you are right in saying that we are comparing the school district to that 2011 number for 2017.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good information. Thank you.
I just want to say I've heard presentations on this before, and that was the clearest, most coherent, inclusive presentation I've heard. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, yes. Great job. A-plus. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
I just wanted to say, and welcome to the Milton Public Schools. I didn't know that we'd been properly introduced.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here.
Next, what we're going to do is we're going to, again, jump one more time out of order to the...
Courtney, thank you, John.
Finance Subcommittee Report because we have Bob Patterson here, and so we'll go to the Capital Committee Technology Proposal, and then we'll jump back to finish off Mary's Superintendent's Report.
And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Patterson, Mr. Gillis, and Mr. Phelan. I need another cup of tea.
I am here because the Town Hall had asked us to come up with a list of capital expense requests for the next five years, and we've been pretty lucky, due to the building project, that in the Technology Department, we really haven't had a big need for big, for capital expenses. But with the, the building project over for several years now, we're starting to see that the, a lot of the equipment is starting to age, and it's also becoming slightly outdated and obsolete and not able to handle some of the growing demand for resources and to provide the, the, the speed of and access that everybody's looking for as far as internet and applications. So what I did was, you have a memo that details each item on the spreadsheet that's in the packet, and then on the presentation here, I'm just quickly going through each item and what it entails. So first of all, for the servers in the district, they're located in each building, and they serve various functions, and for the most part, they are under the $10,000, they're under the $10,000 amount, so they are covered under the operational budget, and we have been replacing them. But we, we are scheduled to replace a fairly large, more robust server in fiscal year seventeen, so that is on the list. We also have on there to upgrade network storage. Currently, we have a device that we store documents throughout the district for all the teachers. They're all located, not on their own computer, but on a server, so that they are secure and they're backed up. And everybody generates so much data these days with, of their files, and now it's a lot of multimedia as well. The storage is, it's nearing its capacity. And years ago, when we bought it, the larger disks were somewhat cost prohibitive, and the prices dropped considerably, so we're able to, we would be able to purchase huge amounts of storage now for less than what we paid five, six years ago. Also on the list is replacing network hardware, which was installed with the school building projects in, in each phase that the buildings were opened. We had new network hardware in place, and the problem with that hardware now is becoming that all of the switches are a hundred megabits in speed, are a hundred megabytes in speed, and most of the modern computers have a one gigabyte network card, which is ten times what the switches can handle. So we end up with potentially a bottleneck at the switch, and a lot of these switches are starting to near their end of life. They, they are starting to have little issues and hiccups here and there. We're also, with new switches, we would like to start preparing for one-to-one computing, and new switches would enable us to have a lot more devices on the network, and they would be much, they would be minimum of one gigabit per port, so we would have the capacity to expand as well. And a new, a new thing that we're trying to get ready for is PARC testing, and I had to write it down because I knew I wouldn't remember. PARC is the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for Colleges and Careers, which is the new SAT, MCAS testing. And I had to do a survey back in the, back in the spring. They're trying to gauge our readiness to administer these tests online, and because of the testing windows and the number of tests that we can give per day, we need to have a lot of devices to do this. So still not really sure what the final verdict is going to look like on the testing requirements, but we're trying to be ready for that. Also, these new devices, the new switches would provide power, I'm not going to get into technical detail, but they would, they would be able to power remote devices without having to have an AC outlet next to them as well, and that includes voice-over-IP phone systems or access points for wireless. And part of this too, the, I, I put the hardware and the wireless together is because they, they kind of go together with the huge demand now for wireless devices, whether it's iPads, other types of tablets, your phone. That's how teaching is being done now, and, and content is being delivered to mobile devices. And so we are piloting iPads at the Tucker. We have thirty at Tucker right now that were donated, or they were acquired through a grant. So we're piloting that program at Tucker. The math department is getting several Android tablets to develop applications, and there are a few iPads at the elementary schools as well. So we're really trying to move forward and get to this one-to-one computing initiative that is the trend. So with the new network hardware, we'd be prepared for that, and with the wireless, it's just, with the huge demand, we'd be able to, well, it actually ends up with, the added devices, adding wireless would be more cost-effective than adding more hardware in the closets and then running physical wires to locations to plug in devices. So that's why that is on there. Let's see. The phone system, we had an analysis done by Signet recently, and they estimated that the phone system has another, at least five to seven-year useful life, but it, it will also be, it will need to be replaced at some point, so that is on, I think, the FY18 line. Also, Microsoft Office, most of the computers are running Office 2003 or earlier, and now what's happening is that a lot of students or outside businesses, parents, they are, their office is 2010, and a lot of times when we're trying to send files back and forth, they're not compatible. So we really need to update all of our computers to the most recent Office. This is a big one, the PCs. Again, we're very lucky to acquire most of the PCs through the building project, and the problem is that the operational budget does not allow us to replace twenty percent of year, which is our policy, and with approximately 1,200 computers, we should be replacing 240 a year so that we all, we don't have computers older than five years at any one time. But because we've only been able to replace about ten percent of year, a year, we're left with about half of our inventory that are very slow and inadequate to, to do what the teachers and students need. And a good example of that is, I'm sure you've all seen on the internet, the constant updates with Flash or Shockwave, they all want to run automatic updates. Well, a lot of those updates require current browsers, whether it's Internet Explorer, Firefox, or Chrome. Well, a lot of the older computers can't even run the most updated versions of the browsers, so that means they can't update the plugins, which means they can't run a lot of the software and view the websites that are pretty popular with delivering the educational content. So that's a huge problem. And also, a lot of the teachers' computers that are older, they are having difficulty even running the software that controls the smartboard, and that causes a lot of delays and it freezes, and they're not able to utilize the boards as much as they should. And also, again, we'll need adequate capacity for the upcoming PARC testing. And wireless tablets, again, this is the growing trend in schools, and it is the next wave of delivering the content to students, and it's not necessarily iPads, but that seems to be the most popular choice at this point. But we, it's on the list, but it's also kind of a wish list, I say, with that category. But it's definitely something that's, it's coming, it's, it's down, it's not even down the road, it's here now, and it's also by investing in wireless tablets rather than additional desktop computers, which we can't replace the desktop computers at this point because it's still in the classroom for the teachers. It's the, it's kind of the, the hub of what they, what they do and what they need to create the content to deliver to the students on a wireless device. But the tablets would definitely be a much better path to one-to-one computing, requiring less infrastructure, and also, we're not sure yet what the requirements will be, but the students may be able to take the, the PARC tests on these devices. And I think that is it.
So questions for Mr. Patterson, Ms. Kelly?
Can we just go back to the PARC test?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm a little bit confused about what that is.
Sure. So, two things. First, I appreciate Bob being here when Matt presented, Mr. Gillis presented the capital purchase for technology. Our task was to go back and ask ourselves, how do we strategize, what this looks like over the next five years, and what the needs are projected to be? And we wanted to bring some logic and sequence to what the purchases were. So, when we looked at the purchase of the handheld devices and the level of computing access or cap, capacity that we need as a district, we also sat down with Courtney Walsh, who's a technology person for high school, Holly Concanon, who's a technology person for elementary and middle, and we started to ask them, what do you need to deliver instruction, and what do you need otherwise for, for techno, technology capacity? One thing that they brought to our attention, which we knew about through their assessment that they sent to Bob, was that the state is starting to ask the districts, what is your capacity for students to take their statewide exam via computer? And PARC is going to replace MCAS in the next few years. PARC, the PARC assessment is being developed by fifteen states across the country as what will be the model exam. That will be the national exam possibly moving forward. And they are assessing right now what the changes to that the exam will be, and they are hoping that the administration of the exam will be electronic for all students. And they are getting to the point where, as Mr. Patterson said, they polled every district for their capacity to do so. Not knowing what that looks like and having to give a five or six-year projection of what our possible technology needs would be, we wanted to make sure we included that we are working towards being able to provide that function, which would be potentially a state-mandated function in the very near future. So, we don't have the details as to exactly what it will look like, whether it will be computer-based, or maybe will it allow Apple-based products, or whether it will allow tablet-based products. But as Mr. Patterson mentioned, we're hoping that it's tablet-based because not only is that a cheaper version for us to be able to purchase in the long run, but it's because the infrastructure is less and the units are less. But they're also teaching and engagement tools that we want our students to start to use in the classroom, so that actual double for us for, we are piloting now, as Bob had mentioned, the iPads at Tucker. Those are in students' hands every day, teaching and learning, and they're, and they're using those, those handheld devices. So, we're, we're projecting out the need to possibly be a one-to-one district, which I think a lot of districts are, in terms of handheld to student over the next five or six years. That's a very lofty goal to reach towards, but we know that if we have to work towards that end, it would be funds that we would need beyond our annual budget, and they would qualify under the capital purchasing rules that Mr. Gillis outlined for us. And so, we, we thought that this would be the best place to put those potential purchases in our budget projections.
One of the things that comes, reasons for PARC is MCAS was created as a graduation requirement, but it's long been known that it doesn't measure college readiness. You can do very well in the MCAS, and it has nothing to do with, practically no correlation with readiness for college. So, they were trying to look at a different model of testing that was going to attempt to do both. And so, it's not going to stop at tenth grade, potentially. All of this is potentially because they haven't written anything yet. I mean, we've got states signed on, there is a consortium that's starting to work on this, and, you know, they've hired people and are doing things, but no one has seen anything yet. And it's, it's interesting. I mean, it's, it's something from the colleges we're watching because Massachusetts has signed on to say that, you know, if someone passes the PARC test in high school, they are therefore ready for college, and we're expected not to remediate them. You know, right now, we give tests to see if people are ready for certain courses. And it's potential that we won't be allowed to do that anymore if Massachusetts signs on to it. I mean, it's, it's very bizarre. It's, it's, from my perspective, it's, it's something we're watching out for. But it is, from this perspective, they're looking at doing it online. And that, that is going to be a challenge.
Is there any talk of funding to come along with the requirement that we be able to?
Of course not, this is Massachusetts.
If I might answer that, that's one of the advantages to being first, being one of the first fifteen states. If they are going to push this, there might be some grant funding available, but when we'll get that, and we don't want to bank on it, we want to be somewhat prepared so that we don't have an accreditation problem related to a new standard that we weren't prepared for. So, that's why this is kind of phased in, at least in, in some increments over the years. You know, this, there is a revision from the town's capital Schedule H. As Bob had been working on the wireless infrastructure and doing some research on some other things, he broke out, replacing the network hardware as well as the revised costs there and being more aggressive with the PCs. I had us going at, at twenty percent replacement cycle, just trying to get up to where we, where we would have liked to have been the last few years. You know, Bob's got us going at, at, you know, about almost fifty percent to catch us back up in one shot, kind of a larger influx. We'll see what happens with the, with the committee here thinks and whether or not the capital committee thinks that that's a way to go. But having the teachers have the right tool in their room so that they can deliver the curriculum is important, and we really, we really do want to make sure we can do that. So, there are some slight changes, at least in year one, they're not so different in the, in the following years on Schedule H compared to what you had in the last meeting.
Yeah, once upon a time, we got away with the slow refresh rate because we would pass machines down into the lower grades, and so the, you would find in the elementary school classrooms, machines of, you know, exceeding grade age. But you could, you could get away with that once upon a time, but now even for, to run your average kindergarteners program, you need a, the technology you need is much more substantial than it ever used to be.
The technology is just leaping so fast, just the last three years. It's just so hard to keep up that, you know, Bob broke it into the simple math of, you know, what was perfect just five years ago, now everything is, is ten times faster. And kids can't even surf the web because the memory cache of the old computers can't go back and forth, or you can't plug in and see, and see certain things because the software's changed. It's, it becomes, it becomes a problem. We're, we're treading water, and we don't, we don't want to keep treading water. We want to be able to swim.
Well, it's also difficult to project out three, four, five years with technology because, and to phase in some sort of one-to-one tablet program, because three years ago, who had an iPad? No one. So, it's, it's difficult.
But the infrastructure is not as likely to change as the actual technology in the hands or the software people are using with the wireless.
Sure.
So, I, you've given a great overview of, of the needs and the demands, really, it's the demands. I think when we start talking about one-to-one and even the PARC assessments, that's something that's much bigger conversation in terms of choices that we make as a school committee and as a district. And I look forward to that conversation, but for the immediate present, we're talking about a dollar number that we haven't yet identified, right? I mean, it's identified here, but we haven't named the number. So, if someone wants to outline what the, what our request is of the capital committee, please.
Sure, and Bob can jump in. So, to upgrade the network storage, as Bob said, you know, we haven't done that in about five years, and we've got, people have accumulated more things, and some of the, just the things they save are bigger than they used to be. So, we need to do that, replace some of the wireless at Tucker.
I'm sorry. So, so we got that in the presentation.
Yep.
The school committee members have this document with numbers in it that wasn't in the presentation.
Okay.
But I think that if we could just give a total number, that would...
The total number for fiscal fourteen would be three hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars. And I guess, you know, the first natural question is, can we parse some of that? Of course. You know, it just depends, do you want to not upgrade some of the Microsoft Office licenses? Do you want to do less computers? Those are the big areas where, where you could do it. Or the network hardware at Tucker, we could probably hold off another year on that, or Bob could chime in as to whether or not that's something that, where we'd have some flexibility.
Well, Tucker, well, in, in the blue also, it's, we are seeking grant funding for the wireless as well. So, the network infrastructure, the hardware, we, since we're trying to pilot the iPads at Tucker, that's where the greatest need is, and the most immediate need is for widespread wireless coverage. So, the network hardware at Tucker would be the first choice as well.
Mr. Walker?
So, Bob and Matt, what I, what I would like to get out of this discussion is the answer to the question, are there, is there an overarching strategy or set of strategies that drives what recommendations we make and how we prioritize those recommendations? And what's, what are we trying to accomplish here?
You know, from an educational perspective, we're trying to provide all the tools that people need to best deliver the curriculum to improve student achievement. This, the timing of this is a little bit awkward, is we're trying to put together a capital plan before we finish the actual tech plan that we need to revise for the state. And, you know, I think I emailed folks, the link to our last tech plan. They're in the early stages of starting that, as John said, that Bob and he had met with the other elementary and high school technology folks as to what it is we want to have to help our kids achieve at the highest level in the classrooms. And at this point, I could turn it over to John if you wanted a more detailed educational perspective.
Well, I'd be interested in what those tools are.
I consider the priorities to be based in the, in the year-by-year chart that you have in front of you, that is, the purchase plan, hopefully, that the, that we adopt to send to the capital expenses. We need, A, to maintain, priority one, the classroom computers at a high level because they're the hub of every classroom. So, that replacement product that we need to have in every classroom is a priority because that drives the smartboards and that drives the instruction in the classroom. The wire, beginning the wireless for every building to support not only wireless potential mechanisms or tablets or, but also to start to provide capacity for all the computers that we use, I believe is very important because we, as Bob said, it's, it's not financially efficient to add any more infrastructure hardwired into the building. The wireless is actually cheaper, it's faster, it has more capacity. So, putting wireless in every building and having that be done over a three-year period, I would consider a priority. I think that we always have to maintain a certain network upgrade, and so that this technology plan is only capital-based, it's not the overall tech plan in terms of what you think the school system should have in every classroom. But in terms of what we're asking this group for, that we feel we cannot afford on a year-to-year basis, that was the task of what this, the goal of this memo, the goal of this presentation in order for us to okay this, to go to the capital group.
So, if wireless is a priority, why wouldn't you do it all in year one?
Because we think it might be cost prohibitive.
Based on what?
Based on the amount of money that it actually costs to do so, combined with having the amount of computers that we need to replace each year. I'm not sure when the last time, and Matt can speak better to this, I'm not sure when the last time anybody asked us for a five-year projection. So, the, the technology in general that we would like to have in the hands of our students and our teachers is based on maintaining a robust rotation of desktops to provide the hub of instruction in the classroom, finish off our smartboards, get wireless infrastructure in place over the course of three years, so we have the capacity to have wireless in the district for a long period of time, and then begin to pilot tablets and other handheld devices as the next generation of technology that we want our students and teachers to possess. So, that in general is the priority.
So, the, with the, just to supplement what John said, with the teachers' PCs and working with the smartboards, when we buy textbooks now, they don't, they're not just selling us a book anymore, there's also a lot of supplements that they're willing to add in that are web-based so that the kids and the parents and the teachers can do things at home as well as, as connect that way. But you, you need to have it working right quickly and if, in the way it's supposed to in the classroom. So, that's why, you know, I think that the teacher computers are up there just a little bit ahead of the wireless, just a little bit. But wireless is where, where we, where we need to go. And if we're successful and Bob's pursuing some, some, some potential funding sources, we could get all of the wireless sooner than in year one, but we don't want to be too, too optimistic.
Ms. Kelly?
Have we explored leasing? I know, you know, you can't capitalize it, but it seems to me in an area where technology, to your point, is changing every minute. Do other school systems lease, and is that something that we should be exploring? You know, even down to the, whatever tablets would be used? All those kinds of things are something that I think, to Leroy's point, are part of the big picture. I'm not sure how it fits into this, this discussion, but I think it's something that we need to put on the table, and we need to create a time or a timeframe around which we will explore those options. Additionally, I guess I would ask about whether, are all classrooms equipped with smartboards right now? Because smartboard does not appear on any of this.
At the Tucker, again, starting out with the Milton Foundation for Education, and then supplemented with the PTOs and a small amount of Milton Public School money, the Tucker is fully equipped in every classroom, the Glover is fully equipped in every classroom. And if you remember Superintendent Jaffoon's initiative, starting a kindergarten and then moving to all first, second, and third grades, at the Collycote and Cunningham through the MFE, PTOs and a small amount of Milton Public School funding will be in October through grade three in all the classrooms. And so, we're on the target of all the kindergartens, all the firsts, all the second, and all the thirds, and providing the professional development for the teachers. At the middle school, they're not, I, I don't really want to say a estimate, well, you, you'll know.
I don't know the exact number based on the number of classrooms, but percentage-wise, I'd say sixty to seventy percent of the classrooms. And here at the high school, it's...
And the Hillside money has, has assisted us at the high school level, but we'll get you that figure. At the middle school, I believe that it's lower than sixty percent.
But I guess my point is, is to Mr. Walker's point, what's, what's the plan? If the, if the goal is that we should have a smartboard in every room and combine that with tablets, that's our vision, or whatever our vision is, and I'm not sure that the, I certainly don't know what our vision is at this point. If smartboards is the first sort of avenue we're going down, why are smartboards not on this list? Do we think that we can fill the gap of not having a smartboard in a classroom by additional funding, which if that's what we're saying is great, and I'm sure that would be part of the five-year technology plan, but, but I guess my point is, I'm not sure what this is telling us for our, at least this year, request in terms of priorities.
Well, the smartboards for a full and complete setup is less than four thousand dollars. And there were, I, I think after next week at Collycote and Cunningham, there will only be eight rooms. be eight rooms left to do. And I don't know the exact number of peers, but I, it is a good question. We did not put them on there because we were thinking of these other items. And we've been able to get the smartboards in. These are items that we probably would not be able to get otherwise.
If I might go, and this, this goes to where we sort of have these educational environments that aren't comparable. So, we have Tucker and Glover that have smartboards in every single room.
So, the PTO.
Because of PTO resources. Cunningham Collycock is still waiting for fourth and fifth grade.
Yes.
So, at the very least, let's try and equalize that. If it means the request goes as part of this request, I think that makes sense. Or if you have another viable option that will get this, you know, sort of gap closed earlier, I mean, I'm a little bit confused as to what we're saying here from a technology perspective.
Ms. Sherin.
Do we need to vote this tonight? Is that, I mean, it's on our agenda as a vote to approve this? I just need some clarification.
I believe that's the plan because we've got a deadline. I mean, I don't know that we're making sufficient progress, but that is the plan.
We could add the smartboards, crossing them out would be quick if that's the world at which we're in.
I think, I think the point we're trying to make, at least Ms. Kelly and I, is that there needs to be some integration between what we're proposing to do on the operating budget side and what we're doing on the capital planning side. And I'm back to, so if, we certainly, at this point, have committed the smartboard, so it would make sense to say that one of the things we want to complete this year or next is to have smartboards in every room. Because we're already eighty, eighty percent down that road, so we have to finish that. It seems like we've made that commitment. Second, I'm back to wireless. If wireless is a priority, I just did a little bit of addition. I think it's less than two hundred thousand dollars, so I don't think that that's cost prohibitive. If we think that, that that's a priority and we're moving toward tablets and a one-to-one ratio for such, then it would seem to me that would be a year-one priority. But I just, I, I, we need to have a story to tell here, ladies and gentlemen, because that's what the capital planning committee is going to ask me. What's the story? What's the, what's the strategy? What are you trying to achieve? And why should we do this instead of the fifteen other things that all the other town departments are asking for? Because all of this is real money and it does affect the tax rate, so we can't do everything.
I would have a question too for Bob. You know, I know you said earlier, some of the classrooms that had them, but the majority of them were bought by outside, I mean, by the MFE, like Mary said, but a lot by the MFE, a lot by the PTOs, and a lot at the high school by the Oakland Foundation. So...
Mike.
Oh. Sorry. A lot of them were bought by the Milton Foundation, Oakland Family Foundation, and the PTOs. So, we've never really had to fund these ourselves or through the town. So, I guess I'd like to know how many we have left to get? How many do we have now? What kind of training is involved? Because, you know, you do have to be trained on these. I know you said they're under four thousand. I think they used to be five thousand, but they've gone down in price.
Yes, they've changed, they've changed a little bit.
So, the number that we need specifically for each level, each school, would be helpful to know.
And I don't want to leave anybody believing, if you remember Dr. Jaffoon's initiative, that Milton Public School funds, the tax dollar hasn't bought some of those smartboards. And probably the implementation, the installation is faster because it was supplemented by huge PTO initiatives.
And as Ms. Bagley Jones, MFE?
Yeah, MFE absolutely, and at the high school. But we can come up with that, the plan, how many we have, where they are, what the needs are.
Ms. Sherin.
So, it sounds to me like we absolutely have to do the infrastructure pieces because those switches are going to die and the capacity isn't there to maintain the level of data that's needed to be stored, restored. So, that's, that's a given that has to be done. Personally, I think the Microsoft Office update, I mean, I think that that's to say that we're at two thousand and three is a little bit embarrassing. So, I mean, if we're going to pick things that absolutely have to stay, I mean, if you could, my challenge is that it's ten thirty-five and we could, you know, go through every item and say what we, what we want to prioritize and figure out how many smartboards we have. But this has to go to the capital committee. When's your next meeting?
We don't, we don't have a meeting scheduled yet.
So, I guess I'm looking to you, Mr. Walker, for, or Mr. Pavlicek, for a recommendation on how we can go forward with this. Because, I mean, we could go through every item here and prioritize and ask for more questions, but that's not getting us to the end game that we need right now. And is this something that we have time to send back to the finance subcommittee and have it brought back to us at our meeting on the seventeenth? I don't know, I'm just keeping all options up there.
I, I think it's important to get this right. So, I, I think we should, if, I think we should talk about it. We, our next finance subcommittee is the fifteenth, and we should talk about it there. Bob, hopefully, you can join us, and then we'll be back on the seventeenth with a plan that we can vote.
Okay. Ms. Kelly.
I also think as part of the context of creating a list, I think we need to look at each item and say, so if we don't get it, do we just push it down to the next year? Is it something that has to be done next year?
Oh, right.
We need that kind of prioritization.
And I, I also think we need to evaluate some of the inherent assumptions in there. For example, is, is, how critical are the switches? Do they have to be done this year? How critical is the network storage? But, because I think there, there are some things that, from an instructional standpoint, are more important. So, we should always push those first and the things that we can defer slightly or significantly, we should defer.
Yes, John.
Is, what is the annual amount that you would feel would be a target number that we should look for in terms of what a first-year total amount should be?
Well, we, we don't have a school's annual amount. It's one and a half percent of total revenue is what we flagged as a reasonable capital expenditure each, each year.
So, your recommendation on behalf of the schools to give, to give Bob, Matt, and I guidance as to what an appropriate year one total would be, what an appropriate year two total would be, would help guide us in terms of prioritizing, A, what's done in each year? So, we, I, I, because I'm asking, if you are asking what that number is...
The guidance that I would give you as well as us is tell the most compelling story you can tell.
Okay.
But at one and a half percent of total revenue, you're looking at something slightly over a million dollars, billion, two, or something like that for the entire town.
Share, share.
Townwide.
And that's not just technology, it's capital and technology.
It's townwide, it's roofs, that's everything.
Capital and technology.
Right, so that's everything. So, I think we have to really have a very tight top priority list to grab whatever share of that we're going to grab. But I think we have to, we're really going to have to make a case because there's going to be fire trucks and dump trucks and name it, and they're all going to be in it.
And we already have a list that's not here that involves roofs, HVAC units, et cetera, that are traditional capital needs of recording.
Yeah, that was last week.
Correct.
If I might. So, that list from Mr. Ritchie came from, we, the taxpayers paid for a study in the town. So, Mr. Ritchie was able to take that study and take from that study. This will be of value with the technology and hand-in-hand with the educational pot because we have a possibility that we'll bring to you before anything happens that perhaps there'll be some funding from an outside source for technology. And it would give, let's say it was the wireless, it would give it great credibility if it was on this list. You know, a donor would want to see that, oh, when you put through, fa, through, put, excuse me, forward a five-year plan, that's one of the priorities of the district. So, this is going to help us in a number of ways.
All right.
So, I, and if I might, another aside, I think that we should move that fifteenth meeting to the evening. If you check your calendars, if we're going to discuss this on the fifteenth, and we'll check everybody's calendar for finance.
For finance, first.
Okay, good.
All right, so this is going to go back to the finance subcommittee to, back to us on the seventeenth. We'll add it to our seventeen...
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Briefly, and I'll, I'll be brief.
So, we're, we're back to your report.
I'll be brief.
Here until midnight.
The, thank you, Mr. Patterson. The registration for adult education happened this week every night in the front office. The director of that program is Sean Walsh. Over a hundred people signed up. And the brochure went out to every home. It's also online and you can still register for adult education. I want to remind parents in the viewing audience, there is no school for children. This Friday, it's a professional development day for all staff. And then Monday is a holiday, Columbus Day. Circle on your calendars, if you're the parent or guardian of a current eighth grader, the high school will be having their information night. This is a huge night on October eleventh at six-thirty in the Milton High School auditorium. We're in competition with private and parochial schools. Parents and the children come that night and have a high school presentation. October twentieth, Saturday night, the Milton High School, you remember last session, last school committee meeting, Michaelis and his board came, the Athletic Hall of Fame. It will begin downstairs for the induction and then move to Lantana's for the dinner. I'm going to reiterate, if every person who's a golfer or a tennis player or supportive of athletics who lives in the town steps up and goes online and tries to help Milton High School on this huge fundraising, fundraising effort on October twenty-third. Circle on your calendar, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh hairspray afternoon on the twenty-seventh, the evenings of the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh. We've had health and wellness as Ms. Bagley Jones will report. Tomorrow night, I have our first PTO monthly meeting with all the PTO presidents. Our policy is meeting, as you see on the agenda, our finance subcommittee, and our next school committee will be October seventeenth. One more note, Ms., I can take off, Ms. Bagley Jones will report on the three hundred and fiftieth. This Sunday...
No, I won't.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Sherin. Celebrate Milton this Sunday. Very huge celebration for this town. It's always outside at Milton High, but there's a rumor that it might rain and it might be at the Collycock Cunningham. That happened once before. So, watch our website, we'll let you know. Special town meeting on October twenty-second. October twenty-eighth, the most fun you'll have all year, the MFE Monster Dash on October twenty-eighth, that's, is it a Sunday? Sunday, at Cunningham Park. You can either run, walk, or help out, or watch thousands of happy children. And a reminder, Milton High, Milton Library, Milton Public Library Gala is on October eighteenth to support our public library. And you can go online, they're still, still selling tickets for that event. And in my email blast blog that went out today, you can get an update of how our athletic teams are going and upcoming games. Thank you.
October eighteenth, Mary, is the Chris Heron event?
Yes, yes. So, I skipped that and I was going to have you or Mr. Phelan speak to that. It's a conflict.
If we can just say it real quickly and then we'll be done with that subject. It's October eighteenth, it's Chris Heron. He's a former Celtics player who's a recovering addict and he's a motivational speaker. He comes and he talks to parents on October eighteenth at night and residents, and then he talks to the students in the field house the next day. So, we've been planning it for a while, Rich Garino, Milton Foundation, the boosters, Milton Public School's a small amount, Milton Board of Health and the youth counselor have all been planning it. Rich got all this funding for it, so I hate to have a conflict, but...
It is one, you know, we work hard against conflicts, but, you know, the people who go to the library gala won't be at the Heron. But that is a huge night for every citizen, every, I would encourage any parent of an elementary, middle, or high school child to go attend that event. And that's another good news story, no tax dollars are paid. It all come through donations. One note before I finish, in your green packet, in response to your questions about activity period, the prioritization of the NIASK recommendations, Principal James Jet put together a packet and he's coming to our next meeting. But all of the answers to all of your questions are in the green packet and he will present at the next meeting. Thank you.
All right. So, on the, my report is, I'm trying to do this as fast as I can. We have a revised school committee calendar. We have just pushed the IT proposal also onto the seventeenth, which is in danger of growing to be as long a meeting as this one is.
May I suggest?
Yes, go ahead.
Could we, maybe you and I and Superintendent Gormley need to see if we could prioritize this and streamline this list of agenda items for the next meeting and send it out for approval of?
Yeah, because we're getting a lot on here. And with Mr. Jet coming in as well.
Right.
That's another item on our next meeting. So, we'll see what we can do there. The RFQ on legal counsel, this, since this requires an expenditure of money and it isn't strictly speaking in our budget, the purpose of this, it's been briefly discussed in the past, was to put out an RFQ, the idea that periodically you should look at your legal counsel contract. So, this was prepared primarily by Mr. Walker. We have a quote from Lawyers Weekly of roughly a little over four hundred dollars a week to, to post it. The question I have, just as soon as we start talking about advertising, is this something that we have within our advertising budget that we have capacity to handle for some number of weeks? And if so, what are the number of weeks that we need wants? And what's the timeline we want to put on this? And exactly how do we want to proceed? So, that's, was my quick issue. Mr. Gillis, if you want to get the...
Yeah, part of the business office's budget is for contracted services just for those types of postings for any type of legal ad that we have to put out there. So, we could certainly afford to do a week or two. It wouldn't impact, I don't think, what we have planned to do for the rest of the year at this point.
All right. The dates on this would have to be changed. They have to go in on a Wednesday, so we won't be able to go until next Wednesday or won't be able to appear for next Wednesday. So, this report date of the twenty-fourth would probably have to be pushed back to the thirty-first in order to give two weeks of advertisement. And so, since we haven't really talked about it in open session, I think we need to just say that we're doing this. And I think it's, I think it's reasonable to actually do it in the form of a motion to issue an RFQ for a request for qualifications to examine a contract with school counsel. Assuming we do that, we will have to create probably a screening committee to look at the submissions, to give recommendation to the full school rather than go through these in open session. We can do it as a screening committee to just look at the issues that came in and screen them and then bring it forward to the school committee. So, I would accept a motion to issue the RFQ.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
I'd recommend we run it for three weeks.
Three weeks?
So, and it's four hundred and fifty dollars a week?
Four hundred and forty-one or something like that.
Ms. Kelly.
Just, and I don't know how, on the last page where it says outside counsel, general labor and employment to the town of Milton School for the period, November twenty-eighth through the twenty-seventh, are we just saying that we'd be willing to engage in a two-year contract as opposed to setting dates? I'm just wondering about if we make that part of the RFQ that...
At the time, I thought we could be precise about time periods, but yes, we're effectively saying a two-year contract from whenever the date of execution of the contract is.
Okay, so we'll have to just change the, add just a hair and reflect that.
I can do that.
Yes, sure.
So, I just would like to say or, or ask for clarification on this, that we are not entering into this because...
that we are not entering into this because we're necessarily unhappy with the counsel that we've got. It's rather just a good practice. Is that how you opened this, Mr. Pavelcheck?
It is recommended by the, certainly the people we heard from MASC, that this is part of a school committee responsibility to periodically put out to bid these types of services so that you know that you're getting a good, you're being served well, but you're also getting good pricing. So yes.
I just wanted to clarify that, number one. And also to say that, so this will bring us up to the end of November, the beginning of December timeline, is that what we're looking at now? Three weeks out?
Something like that, yeah.
It brings us very close to the time when we would be beginning, we would be beginning our contract negotiations, right? In January, February? I just wonder if that would impact that deliberation, bringing someone new on at that time and place? I'm asking, if, I mean, if in fact you did...
I guess I'm of the opinion that if it's a counsel that serves other school committees, that they totally understand sort of the road that you can go down. I think it, I understand your concern, but I think doing this makes sense.
Anything else on this? So it was moved and seconded. Did you get the motion and second to issue the RFQ for three weeks? We will edit the change. All those in paper? That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
You're welcome.
It's on the government study update, the superintendent's evaluation. Ten minutes of 11. As much as I hate to put this off, I think it really, it is not the appropriate time to be doing it. So this will be more of our trying to figure out...
More things to do.
On our next meeting, because that's going to happen. Ed Lydely, what would you like to say about the 350th before we hit the 400?
I'm just going to say the most, the most recent, the most upcoming event. This Saturday at Prouse Farm, we are having Milton's 350th Anniversary Horse Show. It will be a really exciting event for people of all ages. Starts at nine o'clock in the morning and goes till four in the afternoon. Come and be a spectator, come and volunteer. It's totally free, there'll be prizes. We have 18 different classes, 19 different classes of equestrian classes that will be going on. It will be a really fun-filled day with pony rides and many other events. And come and see us at Celebrate Milton. We're going to have a table asking for your input and feedback on the 350th.
You going to be doing any riding?
And selling memorabilia. No, I will not be riding.
Next item was the Health and Wellness Subcommittee Report. Other than having us accept your minutes, do you have anything to say?
No, 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 it was called, it was called.
Well, I mean...
Why do we have to accept the minutes?
We don't, we don't. I didn't write that.
That was my mistake.
I didn't write that.
We don't need, yeah, we don't need to vote them. I mean, you're distributing them to us for our information. So we don't even have to put that off. You can receive them. Finance Subcommittee. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, so I will quickly, the first is the fourth quarter report and year-end summary, which actually comes in two formats, a written word one and the numbers one. We have spent a lot of time on this. We're happy where we ended in terms of the information provided. So I would ask the committee to accept the, both of these documents on behalf of the administration as our essentially year-end statements.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
In terms of the FY14 budget calendar, that's still a work in progress. We actually wanted to sort of drill down a little bit to get to our December 1st deadline and really figure out what components of the budget we needed to concentrate it on. The perspective that we're recommending, and I think the administration is in agreement, is that we really would like to get a cohesive advancement budget, or however we're going to call it, component of our budget really buttoned down, and want to make sure that we can put that effort into our proposal. So we're working on that.
We have some slightly different ideas about how we might frame the budget for the Warren Committee and frame that discussion, so.
The FY13 budget will take up another, oh, you did pull that, okay. The end of year report is also, we didn't vote on that Finance Subcommittee, I don't think.
It's just an FYI.
It's just an FYI, it's ready for submission, it lines up...
I think you need to authorize the chair to sign it on behalf of the school committee.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's listed as a vote on the 17th.
Oh, it is?
So it's, if I might, it's hard copy in your packet, it was sent to you email. If everybody reviews it, sends their questions to Matt Gillis CC, to the Finance Subcommittee, we'll vote it on the 17th. And we'll talk about it on the 15th.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm not exactly sure what F, did F get taken off as well?
That was something Matt had, we have a...
And could I just ask a point of order? When I see negotiations on there, I'm thinking it shouldn't be publicly discussed, but maybe I'm wrong.
This is one that doesn't fall within the exemptions of the open meeting law. I was trying to find the way that it does, but it actually doesn't. It concerns, it concerns a power contract. And if we were selling power, we can do it in executive session. But if we're buying power, we cannot. So it was originally going to be something we wanted to discuss in executive session, but really it's not...
I'm not sure you were fully briefed, but there may be a potential litigation aspect.
Potential litigation isn't covered either. It has to be, the open meeting law is pending litigation.
I make a recommendation...
It isn't filed, you can't go into executive session to talk about it.
You can't talk about your litigation strategy in open session.
That's true. Open meeting law is a very interesting thing.
That is the recommendation, that we table this topic and regroup?
We'll try to...
And come back at whatever, in whatever format is appropriate. That's it for me, thank you.
Policy Subcommittee.
I'm going to try and power through these because I can, I think they can be mostly taken all in one vote. The policies that you're looking at, AC, ACA, ACE, we all, we presented to you back a few months ago, and they are coming back to you, all of these policies, because of a new gender identity anti-discrimination statute that requires, I'll just read this one thing, Chapter 199 of the Acts of 2011, and became effective on July 1st, 2012, made changes to many of the mass general laws relating to discrimination, including a number of education statutes by prohibiting discrimination on the basis of gender identity. And so the only changes in these documents that you see are the addition of the words "gender identity" in a list of different nondiscrimination items. And also, it might, there might be some legal reference that have changed in these policies. But other than that, the documents have remained the same.
The packet you had had two copies of each, the original and the...
Right, the one on the top was our original, and the one below it is the proposed.
And these recommendations came from MASC, yes.
Yes, these are MASC boarding changes.
So the other ones we haven't addressed yet, but the three that start with the letter A, we have just given to you recently anyway. So I think we could take all those...
And, and an important point is that MASC provided a date by which the policies needed to be revised, which was?
July 1st, 2012.
Thank you.
So are you, are you suggesting a motion on A through H?
To move all of these, yes.
So it's moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Bagley-Jones of the committee board. Adopt policies, AC, ACA, ACE, GB, GCF, IIB, JB, and JFBB. Is there any discussion? Ms. Kelly?
Just on ACE, it looks like the format has changed.
So this is one that we had addressed back when we approved or went through the A policies. And that had gone out to our legal counsel for some updating of that document. So that's, what you see is the recommendations of legal counsel conjunction.
Why don't we vote that one separately?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Vote that one separately.
Why don't we vote that one separately, because it's actually a different situation.
All right, so the motion is, and Ms. Sheridan, both the policies listed on our agenda is A, B, and D through H. We'll hold off ACE for just a second.
All of them that say reapproved.
All of them say what?
All the ones that said reapproved. Reapproval. They're all reapproval except that one. Anything else on those ones? Hearing none, I'll take the vote. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Now on ACE, I'd like to make a separate motion to adopt policy ACE.
Some of.
Seconded by Ms. Bagley-Jones. You want to just quickly say the issue with ACE?
So again, this was given to us to review, and we sent it out to our legal counsel to get their input. And this is the document that, the final document that we've come up with.
So the policy should have the name and office address in it?
Should, I'm sorry, did you even name it?
It has a component here that asks for a name, office address, and phone number. So the policy itself, as prescribed, should have that filled in as our part of a vote.
When it goes into our policy book, the person, the coordinator has to be named. There has to be a contact person.
So this is a new coordinator, or this is, I thought we already had one of these coordinators, no?
A grievance officer?
Yes, we do have a grievance officer.
Directly. And, but I think the reason it's left blank is because it might not be the same person forever. I mean, if that person's name changed or...
Right, that's the difficulty of putting names into policies. So if we were to reference a whatever...
Position. Position.
A reference to position, then that would make sense. Otherwise, the policy, in the policy, it should have the present name and be updated accordingly.
So is your recommendation to strike that name?
No, as far as, I mean, we can put that in there. If that's, if legal counsel is recommending that we put the name, which is essentially what this is saying, into the policy, then...
We should put the name in there.
I guess we should put the name into the policy.
No, I don't think that's what they're recommending. I think as long as we satisfy the requirement, which is annually, we need to provide to all interested individuals the name, office address, and telephone number of the person designated. As long as we do that, we're complying with the policy. We don't have to say in the policy who that person is.
Then we should remove the name, office address, and phone number lines in there.
Where are you, where are you?
Bottom page two.
Page two and top of three.
Yeah, I think we should just take those signature lines off. Or I think that we can take those off.
Yeah, I mean, should we just leave it at contact with section 504 AD double A coordinator, period?
Because otherwise, each time that person changes, we'd have to come back and reapprove the policy.
I agree, that's why I brought up the issue.
Good point, we'll take it off.
This is technically a first reading.
With, I move approval with the modifications as suggested by Member Kelly.
All right, so we're moving approval, so it will technically be our second reading then, because if you approve it, it's approved. Right, we don't approve a first reading. I mean, we don't have to...
We can approve the first reading if we're satisfied at the end of the first meeting that there are no problems or issues.
So the motion was made to adopt this policy. With now the three lines for information stricken out as...
Correct.
Any other comments, discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll take the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Citizen speak, topic response. No, all right. Next meeting agenda items, we've added a few. I do remind folks, you probably got in the mail your MASC delegate, Brooklyn. We have, there are five resolutions. We have to designate our preferences to our delegate, and that will have to be shortly. We could do it, we have two meetings actually before that. But it's getting near. And as for next meeting agenda items, we've just loaded ourselves up anyway. Citizen speak. We have one person waiting for...
We might have another on the table.
Citizen speak, Jim Mulligan.
Good evening, Jim Mulligan, 432 Elliot Street. I've decided that I will...
Jim, since you waited so long, you can talk for as long as you want.
Thank you, I was going to try to drive the meeting till midnight, but I think that I need sleep probably as much as you do. I'm a little punchy for my day, and you're probably from yards. I think there's a few things I wanted to say. First off, I wanted to thank everybody at the Glover School. My six-year-old son, Seamus, he turned six on the first day of school, comes home every day quite happy about school. He basically said his brain has never worked so hard. He is absolutely thrilled. Weekends are fun because his teacher, Ms. Cates, sends home an update about what took place during the week. And it really has been absolutely wonderful. So I just want to say thank you to everybody over at the Glover. Drew Eccleson put on a great show that first day as organized chaos as kids can be. So that's point number one. Point number two, I figured I'd beat the rush. Two weeks from now, you're going to have a, probably a pretty full house at 7:00 PM who want to speak about your proposal tonight about the lottery system. So given the opportunity, I'm the only person here at this point, I would say I support the position laid out by the superintendent's plan. I spoke previously to my preference that there would not be sibling preference. I think all families in town have created plans. We all want the best for our children, we all want opportunities for our children. I think that hopefully this will help the morale for the teachers in the English program. I had heard Ms. Bagley-Jones before talk about the morale and some of the issues in that way. And I think from my, from my point of view, it was, I think the teachers are trying to do the best they have with the resources they have. I think we've done a great job in the town to support the school system. But at the end of the day, for my family, it's about having a choice. Nothing against the teachers, it was simply, I want to be able to make the decision at the end of the day. So I think that the plan as it's laid out, if it goes that way, I wish you had moved Mr. Walker's plan tonight and taken the vote. I know other people probably won't want to hear me say that, but be that as it be. I do hope the plan takes into account some of the demographic issues. It sounds as if the chairman has looked into how the lottery system could address that. But I think that Professor O'Drey's points about those not represented in the French immersion program was pretty stark, in my opinion. So I hope that somehow that that can be addressed, or that somehow that works its way out. I'd also like to talk about Mr. Neely's presentation tonight because I thought it was very interesting. I would encourage, hopefully, the school committee to think about that going forward, to participate, and encourage the selectmen to also participate. Because I think it's really important, I spoke previously about the need for a strategic plan. I think that the opportunity to audit is a great management tool. To not audit, to be in a vacuum, you have no idea where your successes are even. You think you know what your successes are, but there are hidden successes that are just laying under the surface that haven't been recognized. And finally, I think that, I missed the last meeting, I was worn out from travel. So four weeks ago, a couple of the teachers talked about the STEM program. I'm a licensed tradesman, I'm a plumber by trade. I haven't worked as a plumber in a few years, but when I listened to their presentation, the one thing I would say about it is, is that I take great pride in my trade. And I wasn't completely convinced that a... And I wasn't completely convinced that a Lego-based program was necessarily gonna encourage kids to think about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics the way that I think about what I can do with my hands. I understand that there's a certain, there's different learning strategies, and, and I appreciate that. I wholeheartedly believe in it. I, I went to college later in life and I love, but I love my trade. When people ask me what I do, you know, I, I have another occupation now, but in my heart, I can still fix your boiler if need be. So I would just encourage you to think about other things along, along the way. Tufts University, Northeastern University, many of the major universities that are teaching engineering. You went to Tufts for an example of the STEM program. They all have programs. I have a friend who's a structural engineer. She belongs to a group that basically, they'd have bridge-building contests and they would make concrete canoes. And I think that the kids at the Glover program, if you're thinking about science, technology, engineering, and math, somebody needs to take a concrete brick, a block, and throw it into a tucker pond, whatever.
Turnip pond.
Turnip pond, thank you. Yeah, I'll get it right. And throw it in there and try to explain to them how a concrete canoe is gonna suddenly be able to float. Because it's, it's great that we're going down this road. I'm not completely bought in on Legos, but I think that we'll see how it goes. So, thank you very much. I wish you the best of luck. Nice to see you all. See you in two weeks. I won't be speaking that much.
Thank you, Mr. Viti.
What he said? I was gonna get up and thank everyone. I would entertain motions moved into executive session for the purpose of discussing administrative contracts. I promise this won't take too long.
So moved.
Not to return?
Not to return to open session. We are, we will be adjourning from executive session. It's moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Sheridan. We're gonna do roll call, Ms. Fadera. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan? Yes, myself, yes. Ms. Bagley Jones, yes. Unanimous roll call, thank you.